...meeting number 21 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Green, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Reverend Derek Holmes of Union Grove Baptist Church with us. Pastor, welcome back to council.
Let us pray. God, our Creator, God, our Conqueror, God, our Comforter, God of Justice and of Righteousness. Lord, we thank you on tonight for the power of community, the privilege of leadership, and the charge of public service. As community and leaders, we are gathered in this space to reason together, to share ideas and insight with the high intent of making the city of Columbus and the lives of those who live in it better. Lord, we invite your divine presence into these proceedings. Allow your Holy Spirit to fill this hallowed hall. Allow your Spirit to speak to the minds and hearts of our local leadership, those elected by people but ultimately chosen by you to lead. God bless their discernment and their decisioning. God let most of our efforts and energy be directed to the least of these. And Lord, may all that is done and said tonight point towards your will being done on earth as it is in heaven. For I pray it now in the liberating name of Jesus who is my Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Blessings.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorance, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorance, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Here are none. The journal is approved. This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be listed in the, will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
This time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dials with announcements and resolutions by my colleagues, Sturman, Councilmember Bangston, Councilmember Flora Joris.
Thank you, Council President. Just one announcement from me. Just want to take a point of privilege and brag a little bit on our auditor and her team. She's shy and didn't want to do this, so I'm gonna do it and embarrass her. But we just completed our audit, and the city has come back with a clean audit and also keeps the distinction of the biggest city in America to get our audit done the fastest. And so, we have some legislation later this evening that pertains to that, but just want to give kudos to the folks that are behind the scenes and to our auditor and her entire team, as well as our friends in the administration and finance and everyone who helped us get to that point. So, thank you, Madam Auditor, for all your work. That's all I have.
Councilmember Rosada de Padilla.
Nothing for me this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dea Howard.
Nothing for me this evening.
Press Pro Tim.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick announcement that today marks day seven of the 60-day public comment period for the Zoning Initiative. If folks haven't already done so, they can review the newly proposed zoning code and updated map online or at person in the zoning gallery, which is just a block away from City Hall on the corner of Front and Spring, where there's free parking and right off a Cota stop. There are also copies of the executive summary at that facility for folks to take with them. We will be hoping to announce in the next few days the first public hearings that council will be hosting on the zoning initiative. So again, we'll be hopefully announcing those in the coming days, but today is lucky number seven of 60 days for members of the public to be able to comment on the modernization of Columbus's zoning code. That is all I have at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Press Pro Tim. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight I have Resolution 100X-2024 to recognize April 11 through the 17th as Black Maternal Health Week and recognize Celebrate One for their work in promoting health care equity. It's now my honor to welcome Celebrate One Board Chair, Ms. Stephanie Hightower, and Board Member Commissioner Erica Crowley, along with other folks who are here to represent Celebrate One to the podium. The United States has among the highest maternal mortality rates in the developed world with 26.4 deaths per live birth. Further, the Center for Disease Control estimates that nearly 60% of pregnancy-related deaths are preventable. There are many gaps in access to basic reproductive health care services like abortion and contraception access for Black women as compared to their peers. In fact, this disparity is so extreme that they are three to four times more likely to die from birth-related complications. Black-led doula and midwifery care is a sound, evidence-based form of health care for Black women and birthing people, providing life-saving services and reducing mortality rates among these populations. These maternal health disparities must be acknowledged and addressed by providing more affordable and accessible health care resources to Black women. Within Columbus, we are fortunate to have several organizations whose missions are just that. One of these organizations is Restoring Our Own Through Transformation. Root is a Columbus-based organization led by a Black woman who are dedicated to raising awareness for Black maternal and infant health through doula services and training, research, education, and consultation. Root has been a key partner with the city, helping uplift Black maternal health within Columbus. Celebrate One has been another organization that has strived to erase these disparities and is dedicated to raising awareness for Black maternal and infant health through doula services and training, research, education, and consultation. With that, I'll turn the podium over to President Hightower.
Thank you and good evening. Good evening, Council President Harden, Councilmember Favor, and esteemed members of city council. I want to thank you for this resolution. I am grateful to be here to accept the resolution for Black Maternal Health Week on behalf of Celebrate One and our executive, wonderful executive director and her team, but truly on behalf of Black women, their children, and their families in central Ohio. I want to just start off with, I'm gonna do more research and I'm gonna let the expert, other expert, talk a little bit more in depth. But according to new research published by the American Psychological Association, it was published online in the APA Journal Translational Issues in Psychological Science, and it's titled, this research is titled, "Black Women Ignored by Social Justice Movement." The research states that Black women are less likely to be associated with the concept of a typical woman. The lead researcher and PhD candidate Stuart Coles, he says this about the research. "Black women are often overlooked in people's conversations about racism and sexism even though they face a unique combination of both these forms of discrimination simultaneously." He goes on to say, "This intersectional invisibility means that movements that are supposed to help Black women may be contributing to their marginalization." Let me give you some more stats. In the United States, to continue what Councilmember Favor said, Black women are almost three times more likely to die from a pregnancy-related cause than white women. 80% of those deaths are preventable. According to the United States Commission on Civil Rights, for each maternal death, nearly 100 women have experienced severe health problems during pregnancy, birth, or immediate postpartum. 20% of Black women nationally report experiences of mistreatment during maternity care. And 29, between 29 and 44% of Black women experience postpartum depression symptoms and are regularly misdiagnosed or not connected to care. But there are some things that we know can help and conquer this. First, we need to build diversity for providers in the prenatal workspace. Doulas, midwives, and community workers should be accessible for every pregnancy and birthing bedside, and these practitioners should be allowed to work at their full scope of practice. Now, knowing that 20% of Black women are mistreated during maternity care means that Black women need to be listed, need to be listened to by their health care providers regardless of the provider's biases, feelings, or opinions about their patient. And increasing access to Black-led, community-based providers, let me say that again, increasing access to Black-led, community-based providers of pregnancy services, whether they be OB-GYN physicians, labor, and delivery nurses, midwives, doulas, or community health workers, we need to make sure that happens. We know that Black women experience better outcomes when they are served by Black providers. So we have experienced, we have experienced providers right here in the city that are expertly positioned to do this work, and two of those are here tonight. Is it MO?
Moby Nurses.
Moby Nurses, under the leadership of, ooh, I'm gonna mess it up. Come up here. They fooled me on this one. See, they shouldn't have did that. What's your name, baby?
Jatu.
Jatu.
Jatu Boykai.
Okay, Jatu Boykai. I got it. And then Root, and Jessica's not here, but is Restoring Our Own Through Transformation under the leadership of Jessica Roach and Dorian Wingard. And Jessica is also the co-chair of Black Mama's Matter Alliance, the founder of Black Maternal Health Week. So, in closing, I want to say thank you again to city council for recognizing Black Maternal Health Week. This resolution is a celebration of all Black women in central Ohio and a statement of a commitment to work of ensuring Black women have the health outcomes and experiences that we deserve. We also want to continue to thank the mayor and council for Celebrate One for allowing us to do this work. And with that, I will hand it over to our first Black female county commissioners, the amazing Erica Crowley.
Thank you, Chair Hightower. Thank you, Council President Harden, members of the city council. Thank you for having us today. And a special thank you to Councilwoman Favor for sponsoring this resolution, which will designate April 11 to April 17 as Black Maternal Health Week. I am here as the newest board member of Celebrate One. I am here as your county commissioner in the largest county in the state and the one that leads on our maternal and infant health investments. But more importantly, I am here as a mother who experienced a traumatic pregnancy with my twins and then experienced complications soon after and went into a hospital system that doesn't always treat women, especially Black women, fairly or equitably. I've talked about my experience several times, so it may not be new to some of you, but the reason why I ended up running for office is because I wanted to really impact Black maternal health in this state, knowing that women are dying at three times the rate of white women and Black babies are dying at three times the rate of white babies. And I wanted to be able to impact those numbers by really focusing on maternal health, because when I got pregnant with my twins, I went into preterm labor at 18 weeks, had to have an emergency procedure that is called a McDonald's circlage, where they absolutely sew my cervix shut, stayed on bed rest for 16 weeks in the hospital, only to have an emergency C-section, stayed in the hospital five days, and then went home and two weeks later was experiencing excruciating pain where I couldn't even stand up. Went to the hospital, stayed in the waiting room for eight to 10 hours with my mother. Now I'm a new mom. I don't have my twins with me. I was also breastfeeding because they were premature. They were low birth weight, so was, had to breastfeed and give them formula, specialized formula, but did not have them with me at the hospital, and there was no concern for what was happening while I was sitting in the emergency room. Only for them to tell me later on, here, drink this barium, and then we'll do an X-ray and see what's going on. Did that for them to tell me I have a pocket of blood collecting in my pelvis and I can go home and take over-the-counter medicine and it'll go away on its own. That is how women die. Women die from hemorrhaging. I was lucky. I am lucky. I understand I am lucky. I am lucky to have my twins who almost didn't make it, but also I am lucky to be standing here before you today to share my testimony and the work and why this resolution is so important, because me standing here is not the reality for so many women. So, this resolution is a vital step toward recognizing and addressing the significant disparities in maternal health outcomes within the Black community, and it signifies our commitment to improving the lives of Black mothers and their children. Black Maternal Health Week is not only an opportunity to raise awareness about the unique challenges Black mothers face, but also a time to shed light on the systemic and structural issues that contribute to these disparities. It is not race. It is not my race. It is not our race. That is the problem. It is racism that is the problem. By officially recognizing this week, you demonstrate your dedication to dismantling these obstacles and implementing policies that prioritize the well-being of Black mothers. During my time in the legislature, I sponsored and helped champion several pieces of legislation that have had or will have a significant impact on the health of birthing people and their families, and I did not do that alone. It was Celebrate One standing with me and my colleagues. It was Restoring Our Own Through Transformation. It was a number of community-based organizations on the ground doing this work every day that made sure that we could extend postpartum Medicaid coverage from 60 days to 12 months after giving birth for women. We fought for an amendment in the state's operating budget, which codified the Pregnancy Associated Mortality Review Board, or PAMR, which tells us the direct and indirect causes of death and requires a report every two years. Save Our Mothers Act, which if reintroduced would require patient safety bundles for the leading two causes of maternal deaths and continuing education requirements for doctors and nurses who come in contact with Black and Brown women. And finally, Medicaid reimbursement for doulas, which is being implemented right now with the Board of Nursing, which I know there are doulas that are part of Celebrate One who lend their voice every month to that cause, which would allow for every woman in the state of Ohio to have access to social and emotional support during and after pregnancy that contribute to the better birth outcomes. This is not our hard work. This is our heart work. Black Maternal Health Week is an opportunity to highlight the progress made in Ohio to save lives and reduce racial disparities in birthing outcomes. The designation of Black Maternal Health Week is a significant step forward about awareness and address the urgent policy changes that we need to save the lives of Black and Brown mothers. Every family deserves to bring a child into this world safely with competent and attentive care and without fear. It should be a time of joy and celebration. Everyone and every mother should have the same opportunities to thrive and not just survive. So, thank you.
Director?
I'm gonna have trouble following all that, which is why I was excited to have these folks here speak, but I just want to say that the goal for having all of these wonderful faces behind us today was to talk about Black Maternal Health Week as belonging to the community. This is something for all of us to celebrate, and so it's not about an organization, it's not about Celebrate One, it's about every Black woman, no matter where they are in the journey of life, being seen and having the care that we deserve across the lifespan. So, thank you so much for honoring Black Maternal Health Week this week with us, and thank you so much to everyone here for joining us.
Absolutely. Before, I have a lot to say, but I want to turn it over to my colleagues if there are any comments, remarks. I know that, yes, Councilmember Bangston, I was waiting on you.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. You know, you are my partner in good on this matter, and I think it's important to lend my voice in this moment because we are talking about maternal health, but men play a role in that, and I hope that the soon-to-be fathers and fathers are listening understand that being a father starts at inception. It starts with the birthing process, and what I can tell you is, I've heard, you heard me talk about our birthing process and what my wife Habiba went through, and it's only because we had access to doula services through Root and because we had the information that we were equipped with to be able to push back. You know, my wife being misdiagnosed with gestational diabetes or being pressured into having to go into a C-section, which could have caused that my son Xavier not be with us today. But all of that is because we had a community of folks behind us, because the realization is that there are issues at our hospital systems and diversity that we have to address, but when we talk about maternal health, that starts well before the birth, well before the hospital. And so I just want to thank you, Madam Commissioner, because you have been a champion and a partner with us here in this chamber on this effort. I also want to thank Madam President Stephanie Hightower, because it is the social determinance of health and everything that you're trying to do to combat those in Black communities. And I see Joy Bivins, who is our deputy director, who has been on the front lines of this work. But yes, it is Black women who are leading the way, but know this, that it is all of our responsibilities to make sure that every mother, as well as every child, makes it through that birth, and men have to have your back, and this man does, and we will continue to lead that way, because it takes all of us and a true family to address this. So, I would say congratulations, but it is one of these types of resolutions that reminds us of all that we have done, but how much work we have to do. So, thank you, Councilmember Favor, for lifting this up and also being a partner in this work.
Absolutely, and you know, this is one in which I don't want us to be leading the way, but if we have to be the ones who are part of the rallying cry, then that's exactly what we'll do. You know, last year in the state of Ohio, we had the historic passage of cementing reproductive health care for the state of Ohio, and we should be very clear that maternal mortality and infant mortality is not just a Columbus, Ohio issue. This is a state of Ohio problem as well for Black women all across our great state. And if we can rally the way that we did to cement reproductive health care in the state of Ohio, it doesn't just stop there. It extends to Black women who are dying daily just in trying to reproduce and keep their families together. Black babies are dying, not living to the age of one in this community. And so, when we talk about fighting on behalf of all women and those who identify as women and birthing individuals, it is inclusive of this conversation here today. So let us not forget the importance of Black Maternal Health Week, but it extends beyond this week, and it does start with education. And so I want to thank our listening audience for giving us a little bit of latitude here to really take the time that we need to have this very important conversation. We know that bias, we know that discrimination, we know that racism exists in the health care system, and so I want to applaud all of those who have stepped up in our community and have been responsive to it, but we have to do more. It's why I advocate so strong for housing in our community, because the data is there that supports when a family before pregnancy is in safe and affordable housing, that that mother will deliver, she will have a healthy pregnancy and she will deliver a healthy baby, that baby will more than likely live past the age of one. And so, these are systemic issues that we are picking apart one piece of legislation at a time, but I'm very grateful for the partnership between Celebrate One, more importantly, with the county and other agencies that are also locking hands, but we have to do more. Director, if anyone wants to get involved this week with Black Maternal Health Care Week, what can they do?
There are a number of things that can happen. First off, we have an advocacy toolkit that you can call and we will send that to you, so that can help you learn how to contact your legislature, learn how to register to vote, how to find your polling stations, all of that jazz. And then it also provides some language and words that one can use. Additionally, we have our first baby shower coming up this Saturday at Fetterston Community Center. That is a huge party, and it's a lot of fun, and we are still in need of volunteers for that event. So, if you are interested in lending your time, please do visit our social media pages, and you'll see pinned in the bio a link to register for volunteering. So those are some great ways to get involved.
Thank you, Director. With that, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorance, Favor, Green, Remi Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
That is all for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Remi.
Thank you so much, Council President Harden. First, I want to say a huge thank you to everyone who came out for the Cleaner Columbus Citywide Cleanup on April 6. What a way to kick off Earth Month, and I know Chair Weich is gonna talk about that in a minute, but we had over 163 volunteers working 312 hours and collecting over 11, about 11,000 pounds of litter in that morning. What a perfect day to get out and start cleaning up Columbus, and so we appreciate everybody that stopped by Goodell and spent the time in their community to make Columbus a better place to live. So, I have a resolution this evening in honor of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 14 to April 20. So I'm gonna ask our guests to come up as I read through a little bit, and we'll get the show started. So the Columbus Emergency Communications Center, also known as the 911 Call Center, is staffed 24/7, 365 days a year, and is the frontline of help for people experiencing emergencies in our community. Our ECC Emergency Communications Center staff is staffed by 117 call-takers, dispatchers, and supervisors, who are among the most highly-trained emergency telecommunications in the state. They are our first responders. Our call-takers are trained to be the compassionate, calm voice on the line when our residents are having what might be the worst day of their lives. When seconds count, our dispatchers not only get help to the scene as quickly as possible, they are also the lifeline for our officers on the street, making sure responding crews have the best possible information about the situation they are heading into. Last year, the ECC personnel handled nearly 1.5 million calls and text messages from the public. So, I would like to turn it over to you, Administrator, and let you talk a little bit about your staff.
Yeah, Chair Remi, thank you, President Harden, council members. It's an honor to be here today. The men and women of the 911 Communication Center are hardworking, dedicated. They are very devoted to this community. The job that they do is very stressful. It's very difficult work that they do. I could tell you, each member here with me today, each one of them has done something amazing in their career. We are literally saving lives and helping save lives every day in that 911 Communication Center. I could definitively tell you that we love our community, we love our public safety forces, and we are very appreciative to have this recognition by you today. Your support means a lot to us, as well as the unmatched support that we've received from Director Prashadi and her guidance. It's been absolutely amazing. Again, we certainly thank you, and we are very appreciative just to have this moment of recognition for all the hard work that they do. My job is easy. Their job is extremely difficult, and I stand in all of them, and I'm certain that the fire department, the police department would echo the same about their support. And again, thank you so much.
Well, thank you for all that you do and for the commitment that you make for our first responders. You guys taking those calls are paramount to the success of everybody that's out on the street every single day, and we know that, and so it's truly appreciated. And I know that there's lots of overtime, and it's long hours, and sometimes it may seem thankless, but we know that everything starts with you, and the critical successes that we, that our first responders have are because of you, and so we truly appreciate it. We take this time and moment to celebrate. So, I guess officially I should introduce 98X-2024 to declare April 14 through April 20 National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Columbus. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues this evening? Councilmember Favor?
Might as well be on a roll, but I did stop you all out in the hallway just to say thank you and publicly to say thank you for the work that you all do. There have been a lot of changes that have been made over the last four years, especially the way in which you all, we're asking you all to do your job, and so it is paying dividends, I do believe, in helping in helping to create a safer, more responsive Columbus. And so thank you for the work that you all do every single day to save and, and help all of those in Columbus.
Absolutely. So with that, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea Alcawar, Dorance Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for yours. Thank you, everybody.
And I believe that is all I have this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Weich.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I have two resolutions. But first, I want to just say thank you to those who came out last week to our community discussion on the north side. Got a chance to kind of talk about the first 100 Days and Council, the city zoning initiative, as well as Link Us. The hope is to kind of do more of these throughout the city just to kind of get feedback from residents. So I was tell folks to stay tuned and check that out. I state, said this last week. I said happy Earth Month, but I guess we need to make it official. So first, I want to present a Resolution 0084X declaring April as Earth Month and next Monday, April 22nd, 2024, as Earth Day. I'm bringing forth this resolution to highlight all the amazing work that the Department of Public Service has done to support all of the Earth Month activities throughout Columbus and our region. This year marks the 54th anniversary of the first Earth Day celebration. In 2023, Green Columbus coordinated over 4,500 volunteers at 160 work sites to plant trees, remove invasive species, and restore natural beauty. They planted 72,000 trees, seeded over 10 acres of prairies, and accumulated 2.28 years of volunteer work all in one month. This year, Green Columbus is looking to expand that impact. And I encourage all residents to spend some time this month connecting with the earth. You can learn more about opportunities to get involved at earthdaycolumbus.org. And I want to say thank you to Keep Columbus Beautiful team and their support of Green Columbus's Earth Month programming. Director, let me kick it to you, see if you have any thoughts to kind of share.
Good evening, Council President, Chair Weich, and members of council. Our department is proudly contributing to the city's sustainability efforts in many ways. In the past year, we expanded recycling to weekly collection, making it easier for residents to recycle and reduce waste. We also opened new food scraps drop-off locations for residents to compost food waste and divert it from the landfill. Our first waste and reuse convenience center launched in 2023. It's a one-stop, drive-through service for residents to sustainably dispose of, reuse, and recycle many items. We continue aggressive work to clean up and end illegal dumping, especially in our vulnerable neighborhoods. And our Keep Columbus Beautiful program is active year-round to ensure every resident can enjoy clean and beautiful surroundings. Bike Plus Planning will expand access to sustainable transportation options, promoting cycling as a convenient and eco-friendly way to get around Columbus. With initiatives like Link Us and investments in active transportation that include bus rapid transit, more sidewalks, and expanding greenway trails, we're creating a more connected and sustainable city for generations to come. These examples are just part of the exciting work being done by the Department of Public Service to combat climate change and create a more sustainable future. And together, we can make a difference. Thank you for joining us, council, on this journey towards a greener, healthier Columbus.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate that. Let me kick it to my colleagues, see if there's any questions or comments from them. All right, seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea Alcawar, Dorance Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Next, I want to introduce Resolution 101X to honor 30 years of wildlife conservation. I want to invite Tom Schmidt, the president and CEO of the Columbus Zoo, to come on up. Tom oversees a $100 million operating budget and a team of 350 full-time and over 1,000 part-time team members focused on a mission of empowering people and saving wildlife. The Wilds has been open to the public, inspiring visitors with immersive tours through an open range pasture since 1994 and sits on almost 10,000 acres and attracts nearly 120,000 visitors annually. The Wilds is among one of the largest, cutting-edge conservation centers in North America and is home to more than 500 animals, representing 28 rare and endangered species from around the world. Thank you, Tom, for being here and for saving lives and preserving nature for future generations. Kicks it to you to share some remarks.
Well, thank you, Councilmember, President Harden, all council members, and our audit. I don't know if she's still here, but congrats on the clean audit. So great job. Yeah, so you may have heard a story. It was in the, it was in the Dispatch recently that the trumpeter swan, a majestic, beautiful bird, is now thriving once again in the state of Ohio. This species was extirpated from the state. So it no longer existed due to hunting and habitat loss. And through a partnership with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and working with zoos like The Wilds and the Cleveland Metropolitan Zoo, we were able to reintroduce and repopulate trumpeter swans back to the state of Ohio. So that's a success story and just one of the many projects that The Wilds has been involved in since its third-year inception. So assurance populations of scimitar horn oryx that are extinct out in the wild, breeding populations of hellbenders to repopulate in Ohio rivers and streams, American bison, restoration ecology, education. Councilmember, you touched on a lot of the important programs at The Wilds and just an amazing opportunity for families to experience what it's like to be close to these amazing animals. So we're, we're excited to celebrate our 30th anniversary. The Wilds is the most impactful conservation center for the Columbus Zoo. And we're excited to, to recognize that today. We're excited for our 30th anniversary and for this proclamation. So thank you so much, and I hope you all have a chance to, to visit The Wilds this year. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Let me stop and see if there are any comments or questions from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea Alcawar, Dorance Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. That is all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have two resolutions today. One, my first resolution is Resolution 0096X-2024. And as I read this resolution, I'd invite Kenya Grace and Nia DeBose to come forward. This first resolution is about raising awareness of the critical importance of recognizing and preventing child abuse. On our way into City Hall today, you may have noticed our blue pinwheels, which represent the great childhood that every child deserves, and the role we each play in providing a loving and supportive environment for the children in our city. In Columbus, we are dedicated to fostering a culture of vigilance and support for the protection of our children and are proud to recognize April as National Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. As I was working on this resolution, all I could think about was young baby Darnell Taylor, who lost his hands at the, lost his life at the hands of someone who should have been providing love and comfort and protection for him. And as we do this resolution, as we take the time to pause and raise awareness, we have to remember that we're talking about our young babies and our young people. And for me tonight, as we talk about this resolution, I'm seeing Darnell Taylor. And so with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Kenya and Nia.
Good evening, everyone. We, we are family.
You're good. You're fine. You're fine.
Good evening, everyone. We are, we are members of the Center Family, Family Health and Black Girls, Young Women Collective. We are here, here on behalf of, here on behalf of the Center and Family, Family Center.
Don't, don't, don't be nervous. I promise, it's just you and I, just you and I. Read to me, please.
The Center, can I sit over?
Sure.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. We are, we are a member of the Center Family Health, Black Girls and Women Collective. We, we, here on behalf of the family of the Health and Franklin County Services, Malik and Young Youth Advising Board. We are, we are here today to invite everyone here to join us to recognize Nation Children Abusive Prevention Month. Before, before, before we go in the future, in any further, we would like to introduce ourselves. My name, the school, age, and grade. My name is Miata Joe. I go to Columbus State.
My name is Karis Gilmore Essig. I also attend Columbus State Community College, and I am a second year.
My name is Nia. I go to Bishop Partley High School, and I am a junior.
My name is Kenya Grace, and I'm a senior at Fort Hayes High School. Celebrated across the country in April, National Child Abuse Prevention Month is an annual observance to raise awareness about the critical issue of child abuse and neglect in our community and beyond. Child abuse and neglect, also known as child maltreatment, are actions or failures to act by caregivers that cause harm or put children at risk. This can include physical, emotional, or sexual abuse, as well as neglect, and can occur in a child's home, school, or groups that they interact with. Did you know, last year Franklin County witnessed nearly 28,000, I'll repeat that, 28,000 reports and calls to the child abuse hotline, and over half relating to physical child abuse. When it comes to the topic of child abuse neglect, it is also important to note that black girls and young women are disproportionately impacted, with many cases going unaddressed or overlooked. In 2021 alone, Franklin County Children's Services received reports of over 7,200 incidents of abuse or neglect concerning black girls, further highlighting the urgent need for targeted support and intervention to protect vulnerable children in our community. We believe all Central Ohio community members have an active role to play in ensuring children lead positive, safe, and thriving lives, and that their families and caregivers have the information and support they need to create safe spaces for children. So how can you and others in this room join us in our mission?
One of the ways you can join us in our mission is through blue pinwheels. As a proud demonstration of your commitment to this issue, the Center for Healthy Families, on Saturday, April 6th, created a pinwheel display at the Columbus City Hall lawn. The blue pinwheels boldly show our city's support of this important issue. The color blue, inspired by Michael, a three-year-old who tragically lost his life to abuse, represent hope and remembrance for all children affected by these issues. On Wednesday, April 10th, we urged City Hall and other government buildings to illuminate the outdoor building lights blue in support of National Child Abuse and Prevention Month. The Franklin County Children's Services offices were illuminated on Sunday, April 7th. On Wednesday, April 10th, we encouraged all council members, county commissioners, city leaders, and everyone in our community to wear the color blue and post a selfie to social media, tag the Center for Healthy Families, @TheCenterForHealthyFamilies, and post using the hashtag, #OhioWearsBlue2024. The Center for Healthy Families has also distributed National Child Abuse Prevention Month signage to various city and county departments. If you've received a sign, we ask that you proudly display this signage on the City Hall lawn. Lastly, on Wednesday, April 10th, Franklin County Children's Services held their annual Child Abuse Prevention Breakfast, featuring healthcare expert and advocate Dr. Amy Atkins.
More than a color, this is a human issue that impacts innocent lives each day. This month is about intentional action and using our power, our voices, and our networks to advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves. Child abuse prevention is so important to me because I am not so many years removed from being a child myself. I am thankful to be blessed with a loving community of support around me, but I remember what it was like seeing my classmates and even best friend go through abuse by close loved ones and the process of getting her into a safe home, as well as having her in my own home. The sense of powerlessness and lack of control over life and its circumstances frustrated me. And I recognize the lasting trauma and mental, as well as physical effects that follow throughout life as a result of it. I am thankful to be empowered by the Center for Healthy Families to be an advocate for children and to help them be empowered themselves. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to serving alongside you as we all work to raise awareness about this important issue. I also would like to present these pinwheels to City Council in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, and well done, ladies. Well done. Are there any questions? Councilmember.
You knew I was going to say this. First of all, to the first young lady who spoke, I've been sitting in this chair for three years, and I still get nervous. So you should never worry about that. I also want to say, when we talk about an issue where we don't give young people voice, especially in a space like this, where we don't have, we don't have enough youth of voice, and we don't have enough youth who are guiding us and elevating issues that they care about in the communities that they live in with the people that they love. This is, there is power in that. And the fact that you are all young girls, the fact that young women, and the fact that you are all women of color who are here, who are advocating for an issue that disproportionately affects our communities, where there is not talked about enough, there is still a stigma about it. There is power within that. So I want to thank you all for being here today. I want to thank you for being brave and coming and sharing this issue with us today because it is so important. I also want to say, Nia, I have a fellow hawk who goes to Bishop Partley. You're doing all the hawks proud today. But thank you for being here this evening. And while this issue is one that is not, obviously, one to be celebrated, the young people who come here year after year are certainly to be celebrated for your efforts and for bringing this, for, like you said, Council President, there's always going to be the face of a young person or a child that we tragically lost. That is a reminder that we need to continue to do more. And I think this council meeting, we've talked about it from the start of the resolution, that all of these factors all play into each other. And this is where we need to rally together as a community for all of you. So thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments, is there a motion? I move to adopt. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea Alcawar, Dorance Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And my final resolution tonight is Resolution 0099X-2027. I'd like to invite Dave Babner and all those are here to celebrate the Ohio Health Capital City Half and Quarter Marathon and the Columbus Promise 5K. CAP City is famously called "the best tour of Columbus on two feet", and I couldn't agree more. It's such a special time when visitors from around the country get to participate in one of the top racing events in the world and explore all Columbus has to offer. But I truly appreciate how the CAP City teams and M3S Sports work to make a special event that benefits our community. In particular, I'm proud of the partnership with the Columbus Promise and the Columbus Promise 5K. This event helps to raise awareness and create new opportunities for our Promise Scholars. So I'd like to thank the team at M3S and CAP City for getting ready to host another amazing event and for being the gold standard of racing events, not just a event, uh, and for being the gold standard of racing events, uh, not just in our community, but all around. I'm so proud, I'm so grateful for the partnership and the focus on Columbus, um, and it really has shown itself in you uplifting, um, and supporting the Columbus Promise and our more than, uh, uh, 1,500 Promise students that are now at Columbus State, um, and I'm just really grateful for this. And you brought Batman, so that is grateful, too.
Whenever we can have superheroes.
Yeah, no, we need a superhero.
You surprised me, and I said, "Come on up, we're gonna have some fun." Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Doran's, distinguished members of council, thank you for the recognition tonight. As Council President Harden said, my name is David Babner. I am the founder and race director for M3S Sports, and the 21st Annual Ohio Health Capital City Half Marathon, Quarter Marathon, and Columbus Promise 5K. The year, the date of this year's event is April 27th, so coming up in just a couple of weeks. With me tonight is Danielle Wagner from our team, and some of our ambassadors, who highlight what a remarkable running and walking community we have in this city. You may see Chris at a lot of our start lines in various superhero gear. He is an absolute remarkable ambassador that, that thrives on health and wellness throughout our community. I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to thank you for your continued and unending support of our team in the event. When we founded the event in 2004, our mission was to create the best celebration of the healthy, active lifestyle in the best city in the country. This year, we can't wait to welcome 11,000 participants to our remarkable city for the best tour of Columbus. Each year, the event continues to bring in millions of dollars of economic impact, but more importantly, changes the lives by engaging our community in the healthy, active lifestyle. We know we have the best city in the country, and now Cap City has been recognized as one of the best half marathons in the country. We could not do what we do without the tremendous city services we have in Columbus, the Division of Police, the Division of Fire, and all of public safety. I saw Director Prashati earlier tonight, and thanked her for her, all of her assistance as well. From, from the Director of Public Safety, Parking and Streets, Recreation and Parks, and many more, we all worked together to produce a remarkable event. We understand the important programs you have developed, and we strive to support them. Over the years, we've supported the Capitol Kids After School Program with, with Mayor Coleman, the City Leaders Program, and starting last year, renaming our 5K to the Columbus Promise 5K. The Columbus Promise 5K is a remarkable partnership between I Know I Can, the City of Columbus, Columbus State Community College, and M3S Sports to raise awareness and funds of the Columbus Promise. Many of our event partners also support the Columbus Promise, including our title partner, Ohio Health and PNC Bank. In 2016, in our partnership with you, Franklin County, the Greater Columbus Sports Commission, the Capital City Half Marathon hosted the United States Track and Field National Championships for Men and Women. This showed the national running community, we were the gold standard in hosting events, and boosted our na- national reputation. Now we have running groups and organizations coming to Cap City on an annual basis from all over the country and many other countries. We are proud that Black Girls Run, one of the largest national running groups in the country, has selected Cap City as their 2025 National Meetup Event, bringing over 1,000 women from around the country to Columbus.
Wow.
This will increase our community and economic impact significantly. The President of Black Girls Run, J.L. Alexander, is coming to Cap City in two weeks to participate in this year's event, meet with city officials such as Council President Harden, Commissioner Kevin Voice, Stephanie Hightower, and many more. I welcome all of you to join me, our ambassadors, and our entire team to the stage the morning of April 27th, to welcome not only J.L. to our city, but all of the participants from around the country, and CY Cap City is now one of the best half marathons in the entire country. Thank you again for the recognition and the time tonight. We are proud to be a small part in our community's collective success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, thank you, David. I, um, uh, I am just really grateful for every, uh, what you do in particular. I say that you have the best view of Columbus. Uh, every, uh, Cap City Marathon, I would tell our new members, take him up on that, going up on his dais and looking out, there's something about seeing, you know, 10,000-plus, 11,000 folks who are excited, filling up High Street, um, that really makes you proud, and, uh, so I'm excited to be there, uh, in a couple of weeks. And Mark Carter from our team is an avid runner and, uh, now an ambassador, and I actually have a connection with Chris, uh, or, I mean, Batman. Uh, we went to, we graduated, uh, CAWS together, uh, not too long ago, so, um, not too long ago, yeah, 20 years ago. Are there any questions or comments from my friends, my colleagues? You, are you guys my friends? Councilmember.
I was just gonna say, you gave us these medals, and challenge, I feel like, accepted. I'm not sure about this one, but, um, I feel like I need to earn this 5K medal next time.
We'd love to have you be part of the event.
I mean, thank you, because I feel like, while this is a tremendous gift, I feel like I need to earn it, so, thank you. I'll get motivated. I can't promise that I'll be ready by April 27th, but 2025, I'm there.
Press the town.
Thanks, Council President. So I'll be running the half with you guys here in a couple of weeks. Uh, I think it's the fourth or fifth time I've run, and just wanted to, again, compliment the entire team. It's, uh, I, I think one of the things that's so special about this race is sort of the festive atmosphere that comes with so many folks coming into town, and so many folks in Columbus making this one of their key races every year, and the team throughout the entire city does such a wonderful job of, uh, if you've run these things before, you know that it comes with a lot of logistics, and making sure you start from, you know, the first mile all the way to the end, and, uh, the team certainly does a wonderful job supporting folks along the way. Uh, so thanks to Batman for, uh, making sure that they're out there, bringing a smile to folks' faces as well, as, uh, people are maybe towards the end of the, the half marathon get a little bit, uh, outside of themselves. So it's always nice to have, you know, fun stuff that's happening across a race. So, uh, having run a lot of races in a lot of other cities, there's nothing quite like this. So just want to say thanks to you all, and thanks to the team for making it happen for so many people in our city.
Thank you very much.
So I have run both of these, and what I would say to Councilmember Barosa de Padilla's point, that I would think that this is one of the, uh, friendliest runs that one can do outside of like a mud run or, or something along those lines. It's walking friendly, so there are folks that are walking along the path. It's jogging friendly here, um, avid jogger, uh, but, but that, that speaks to the environment that you all have created, um, and it's, it's a welcoming environment for all folks in our community, all fitness levels, uh, so I will definitely be there on the 27th to, to welcome runners and, and applaud them along the way.
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And we do, we hire people to be last, so no one ever finishes last in any of our events, and, and we welcome, we welcome participation, whether walker, runner, skipper, we just want you to participate, so.
Your girl hasn't gotten off an electric bike yet, so I'm just saying.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any comments by our elected officials, City Auditor? Congratulations again. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda by the clerk. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record ordinance number 30-day legislation from tonight's agenda for first reading?
Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee Ordinance 1053-2024, Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee Ordinance 1058-2024, Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee Ordinance 1054-2024, Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee Ordinance 1057-2024, Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Ordinance 567-2024, Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee Ordinances 811, 815, 841, and 861-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Actual, the clerk now read those into the record.
Resolutions of Expression 97X-2024, Finance and Governance Committee Ordinances 399, 823, 829, 831, 863, 888-2024, Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee Ordinances 804, 1060-2024, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinances 728, 839, 873, 882, 905, 929-2024, Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee Ordinances 659, 778, 936, 948, 963-2024, Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee Ordinances 876, 877, 906, 908-2024, Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee Ordinance 800-2024, Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee Ordinance 1050-2024, Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee Ordinances 249, 683, 701, 704, 754, 789, 809, 810, 825, 835, 859, 866-2024, Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0100, 101, 102, 103, and 104-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. Uh, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, may I have a motion of approval of these items as needed as consent? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
The consent agenda is passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by Councilman Bangston. Councilman, floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, a lot of, uh, just routine ordinances, uh, this evening in finance and governance. Uh, first, we have ordinance 0817-2024, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $65,443, $100,529, $165 within the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Uh, this is a, uh, simple move of, um, funds from one, uh, fund to the other fund, and will help us to strategically integrate the remaining American Rescue Plan dollars into the city's main financial pot and funding mechanisms. This allows us to move forward on using the funding, uh, for community goals and loss of revenue from the COVID-19 pandemic. Are any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Uh, the next 10 ordinances pertain to our upcoming bond sale and the capital budget, and so I just want to give a brief synopsis of those and then read through all 10 of them. Uh, so, uh, the upcoming ordinance, as well as the following nine ordinances, authorize the city of Columbus to issue bonds in connection with the 2023 capital improvements budget, which was adopted by city council in July of last year. These bond sale ordinances are part of the city's, uh, established capital budget process and are necessary to receive capital funding to support city infrastructure projects. Thanks to the city's longstanding AAA bond rating, um, funding can be obtained at the most cost-effective rates available in the market, which reduces the overall debt cost to the city and enhances the amount of funding that goes directly towards projects rather than debt service. And as I mentioned, uh, in my announcements, again, when I commend our city auditor, uh, because that AAA bond rating is thanks in part, uh, directly to her stewardship and her office's efforts. Uh, in addition to new funding, these ordinances also authorize the refunding of certain previously issued bonds. Uh, this refunding process allows the city to refinance existing debt to capture additional savings in the current market. The combination of ordinances that authorizes these bonds distinguish between the various purposes that the bond proceeds, um, um, will go to, for example, recreation and parks versus public service, and so those are tied to the clauses that were passed, uh, by the voters. Uh, with that, I will move into the first piece of legislation, ordinance 0987-2024, to auth- uh, authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $60,165,000 for health, safety, and infrastructure-related projects, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $4 million from the debt retirement fund for costs of issuance and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 0988-2024, authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $66,180,000 for recreation and parks-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next is ordinance 0989-2024, authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $160,275,000 for public service-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next is ordinance 0990-2024, authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $50 million for neighborhood development-related projects and to declare an emergency. At this time, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed, uh, passed.
And next we have ordinance 0991-2024, authorizing the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $33,855,000 for public utility-related projects and to declare an emergency. Uh, at this time, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Uh, next we have ordinance 0992-2024, authorizing the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $18,425,000 for construction management-related projects and to declare an emergency. At this time, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 0993-2024, authorizing the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for fleet management-related projects and to declare an emergency. At this time, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next is ordinance 0994-2024, authorizing the issuance of limited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $18,250,000 for economic and community development-related projects and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And next we have ordinance 0995-2024, authorizing the issuance of, of unlimited tax general obligation bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $124,145,000 for the purposes of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds in the city and to declare an emergency. At this time, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And last, we have ordinance 0996-2024, authorizing the issuance of limited tax general obligation bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $15,740,000 for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city and to declare an emergency. Uh, and before I move for passage, again, just want to reiterate, uh, these last 10 ordinances that we discussed are pertaining to the 2023 capital budget. Uh, the way we fund things in the capital budget is typically always a year behind, and so this is the bond sale, uh, for that budget that we passed last year in 2023. These are all great infrastructure projects that we see in our neighborhoods. I know that for some folks, the orange barrels, uh, can be annoying, uh, for us when we see those orange barrels, that means progress, and it means your tax dollars at work. Uh, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Ock, Howard Doran's favorite green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees this evening, and I challenged my colleagues to pass 10 pieces of legislation that quickly.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilman Barosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, before I read the one piece of legislation today, I did, I was remiss in the, um, announcements to just congratulate the Department of Public Service on a successful demonstration, uh, the demonstration for a bike lane on East Broad Street. Folks did not get to see the coverage, um, and they probably got very scared when they saw lots of barriers and orange cones down East Broad Street by Franklin Park, but we were able to, uh, successfully, with a number of community members, uh, test the width and the length and, um, the barriers that we used to protect folks for a future project that we'd be doing along East Broad Street. So, um, it was a very exciting day, little drizzly, but the folks brought the sunshine, so congratulations. So congratulations. So I have one ordinance today in Public Service and Transportation. That's ordinance 0956-2024 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate $325,000 within the general fund Neighborhood Initiative Subfund to authorize the interim director of the Department of Public Service to enter into grant agreements with the Short North Alliance Incorporated, the Capital Crossroads Special Improvement District of Columbus Incorporated, and the Columbus Fashion Initiative, doing business as Columbus Fashion Alliance in support of their respective Open Streets event programming, and to authorize the expenditure of $300,000 within the general fund Neighborhood Initiative Subfund. Open Streets Initiatives offer communities the opportunity to experience and imagine our city's streets in a whole new way, encouraging greater civic participation while temporarily closing major streets to car traffic and opening them to people biking, walking, rolling, and connecting with neighbors and local businesses and civic assets like museums and galleries and parks. Open Streets Initiatives help us reimagine our cities as vibrant, people-centered spaces and prioritizes people and other alternative modes of transportation over traditional car-centric infrastructure and aims to fundamentally change how people think about our city's streets. I am so thrilled to launch three prominent Open Streets events this year across Franklinton, downtown, and the short north neighborhoods. I am championing this initiative so that we can showcase what our city looks like when you truly prioritize people over cars. And this evening, we have a few speakers on this ordinance, and I want to highlight our partners at Transit Columbus, who first started Open Streets Initiatives on Parson Avenue and other parts of the city years ago. And during this time, while we are having important conversations about transit in Columbus with Bike Plus, Vision Zero, and Link Us, we felt that it was a good time, the best time, to put some resources towards larger-scale Open Streets Initiatives across the city. We piloted streets, Open Streets during Holiday Hop in partnership with the Short North Alliance, and we took some lessons learned. And now this year, we're piloting multiple events in these three communities. Aside from the transit portion of Open Streets, there's an economic development aspect to this that brings more traffic into our brick-and-mortar businesses along the corridors, as well as other entrepreneurs that might be doing some of the engagement along the streets that we closed down. So I'd like to invite our first speaker to come up today, Kate Stevens, owner and founder of Red Giraffe. And as Kate comes up, we thought that it was important to talk about the economic impact that Open Streets has when we closed down a swath of High Street during Holiday Hop. The floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Kate Stevens, owner and founder of Red Giraffe Designs. I've now been in the short north for almost 10 years, where I open my jewelry studio and boutique. On behalf of the short north business community, I would like to express our profound gratitude in Columbus City, to Columbus City Council for your continued support of our neighborhood. This grant is not just a financial boost, it is a vote of confidence in our community and its contribution to the city's cultural and economic vitality. We saw a significant success with December's Open Streets Holiday Hop, and know the upcoming hops on High Street events supported by tonight's ordinance will play a crucial role in welcoming new and returning visitors to our neighborhood. These events drew, draw significant foot traffic, directly benefiting the more than 300 local businesses like mine. The increased exposure not only boosts sales, but also highlights the unique character of our community's offerings. Furthermore, these events offer a platform for local artists and artisans, enriching our cultural landscape and providing residents and visitors alike with memorable immersive experiences. Once again, thank you to the members of the city council for your continued support. Your dedication to fostering the arts and supporting local businesses is what makes Columbus a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate, for being here. I know we have two other speakers on this ordinance that I want to invite up. I also want to acknowledge Betsy Pandora from the Short North Alliance, who was a great partner with us. Open Streets, just so people can understand conceptually, there are literally, we're opening up the streets to people. And so there's engagement along the streets, there's dancing, there's other businesses, there's folks who have businesses along the corridors can come out onto High Street. And so this was pretty significant that we were able to do this, and you can see the economic impact that it brought, especially for businesses out following COVID.
Yeah, I mean, for my business, I was looking at the numbers today, actually, and my best day before the open gallery hop that we had in December, I did 30% more this past one than any other day that I had down in the short north. So it makes a difference, like, it really does. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Betsy, for being here as well. And we, again, have two other speakers on the ordinance. So first, we have Erin Sink, followed by Duncan Soror. Duncan, correct me if I said your name incorrectly, but Erin, if you want to just introduce yourself and any organizations that you're presenting, you have three minutes for your remarks.
Good evening, council members. It's great to be with you tonight and speak in favor of ordinance 0956, which supports the city's Open Streets program in Columbus. My name is Erin Sink. I'm the vice president of Yay Bikes and happy to be here speaking on behalf of our members and those who ride bikes for transportation in Columbus. Our mission at Yay Bikes is to help people ride bikes in the road conditions that exist today and improve the conditions that will exist tomorrow. We know that in central Ohio, over 60% of people say that they're interested in making some trip by bike that they're currently making in a car. These bike-curious folks often cite some barrier, and most often, it's safe, comfortable, and convenient transportation infrastructure as the reason they're not riding. Yay Bikes supports Open Streets as a tool to rebalance the right to use and use of the public right-of-way, to encourage residents to walk and bike, and to demonstrate the wonderful possibilities that open up when we fundamentally shift how we think about road use and who has access to our streets. Open Streets, as has been mentioned, is a program where we close portions of city streets to vehicular traffic for a day and allow, it comes with a range of benefits to people who live in the area. Those people are invited to enjoy non-motorized forms of travel and interact in a streetscape and with one another in a way that simply isn't possible in the presence of cars. The benefits of Open Streets to Columbus residents include accessible free recreation, improved public health, and community building. And as mentioned by our previous speaker, it can be a great economic driver for businesses located within an open street zone, allowing them to introduce themselves to new audiences. And of course, Columbus is in good company. Many cities across America have already implemented strong Open Streets programs, cities like Portland, both Maine and Oregon, Los Angeles, San Antonio, Minneapolis, and many more. From Yay Bikes' perspectives, one of the biggest benefits of Open Streets is allowing people to experience what it feels like to have truly protected and comfortable spaces for people biking and walking. The world looks very different from a sidewalk or the seat of a bike than from a car. I'm often amazed at the things I find and notice in the neighborhoods of our city when I'm on a bike rather than inside a car. A cute pocket park that's lovingly tended by the neighbors, a new restaurant or coffee shop I wouldn't have seen, or a colorful mural that really defines the neighborhood's character. These are the things that make our neighborhoods vibrant communities. I also know that we can sometimes have a hard time imagining things we haven't tasted or experienced. Open Streets allows people to experience and envision way, new ways of organizing our city and imagining broader transportation options than currently exist in Columbus today. So with that, I'll just say Yay Bikes is in full support of the city's Open Street program and hope it is the first of many more events to come. We look forward to participating in all of them. And I would have to say, we also hope that eventually we'll go down a road where we may be able to have some permanent pedestrianization of some streets, so these opportunities are open year-round. Thank you very much.
That is definitely our goal, Erin. Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues, comments?
Perfect. And then our last speaker, Duncan Soror. And then Duncan, if you could introduce yourself, any organizations you present, and then you have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Kent, thank you, council member, and to the rest of the council. My name is Duncan Soror. I've lived in Columbus for about a year and a half now, after living in Macon, Georgia for 20 years. So Columbus is an interesting city, I'll say that, and I'm glad to be here. I'm affiliated with Transit Columbus, Democratic Socialists of America, Black Men Build, and a number of organizations. Won't list them all here. So in moving to the city of Columbus, I was excited for the opportunity, but also aware, you know, of certain challenges, one of them being transit and transportation. I anticipated the political and infrastructural challenges, but I was a bit naive to the psychological and cultural barriers. So I think something like Open Streets is a very valuable event that can help to overcome that. But even where I lived in Macon, we had Open Streets Macon about twice a year, and it was almost always a fun and successful event. I live in downtown Columbus and I work in Bexley. Fortunately, you know, I do have a car, you know, there's, I think there's a perception sometimes that transit and cyclist enthusiasts, you know, are against cars, you know, I have a male transmission Mazda 3, so just a point there. But I do prefer to walk, cycle, and take the bus when I can. So I'm thankful for the stretch on East Main Street that's pretty accessible, and I'm very excited for the corridor, the BRT corridor, that'll be implemented there. In addition to the community and economic benefits, I want to, you know, definitely point out the health benefits. I'm not a mental health professional, medical professional, or fitness expert, but take this with a grain of salt, but I can say living in an area where I can walk and cycle to many places has greatly improved my overall well-being and quality of life, and I want that for all residents of Columbus and across central Ohio. I'm sure you're already aware of this or preparing for this, but, you know, I'm sure you can imagine closing down streets to cars in an already car-centric city can provide some challenges and annoyances to drivers. So just, I just hope you prepare for that and coordinate with Coda. Yeah, so what I had to say was pretty informal. I think I've touched on it all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Duncan. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? So just in closing, for folks who are watching, pending passage, we will be sharing more information about Open Streets. We will have a website available so that folks can find out more about the events that we'll be holding in these communities. Our hope is that this is first, the first of many Open Streets events that we'll be having across the city of Columbus, that, again, we are putting people before cars, putting safety first, and helping our folks see their city and experience our city very differently. So any other last comments? Great. So with that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before counsel is the Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Housing, Homelessness, and Building, we have ordinance 894-2024 to authorize the executive director of Celebrate One to enter into a service contract with Physicians Care Connection for an amount up to $1.3 million for housing administration and housing support services, to transfer within and expend up to $1.3 million from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes and declare an emergency. Celebrate One embarked upon two housing programs for pregnant families that were originally funded by the Coalition on Homelessness and Housing in Ohio for the Healthy Beginnings at Home 2.0 program and the Housing Pregnant Women program, funded privately through a grant from Anthem Elephants in April of 2022. Given that both funding sources have been exhausted and the 60 families participating in the housing programs require ongoing support, it is necessary to add funding to the program. This funding will enable Celebrate One to consolidate the two housing programs into one program for all 60 families. The Healthy Beginnings at Home and Housing Pregnant Women programs were created with the intention to reduce the infant mortality of high-risk pregnant women by providing affordable housing intervention to those living in unstable housing. These programs provided rental assistance, housing stabilization services, as well as prenatal and postnatal support to promote the health of a mother, infant, and family as early as possible in pregnancy, and to minimize the impact of unstable housing on pregnant women living in Celebrate One high-risk target zip codes within Columbus. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before counsel is the Health and Human Service and Equity Committee chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have one ordinance on second reading. It is ordinance number 0953-2024 to authorize the executive director of the Office of Celebrate One to transfer $290,000 within the Ohio Department of Medicaid Enhanced Maternal Health Program Grant Fund, to authorize multiple non-for-profit contracts with existing sub-grantees for the Enhanced Maternal Health Program in Columbus and central Ohio, to authorize the expenditure of up to $290,000 from the government grant fund and to declare an emergency. At this time, I'd just like to ask our executive director, Danielle Tong, if she wants to say just a couple of brief words about this program, what the funds are going to cover, and also what grantees have been chosen to help execute this contract and how they're going to support participants.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Chair Green, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. Celebrate One received a grant from the Department of Medicaid in 2022 for a grant cycle that extends through 2022 to 2024. So the ordinance that you are reviewing today is a reallocation of the existing grant that we received. We began a grantee, sub-grantee relationship with 11 community-based organizations that serve community, with community health workers, community-based interventions, and doula services. So those are primarily the services embedded within those grantees. We have a number of organizations that were able to benefit from the funding, and those are, apologize for the delay, the Men for the Movement, YMCA of Central Ohio, the City of Refuge Good Life Foundation, Moms-to-B, Physicians Care Connection, Project Milk Mission, Mental Health America of Ohio, Urban Family Development Center for Dads-to-B, Primary One Health, Center for Healthy Families, Ohio Health, Heart of Ohio Health Centers, and Celebrate One. And though, all of those organizations mentioned serve either, serve with either community health workers, use a community-based intervention, or supply doula services, we will not, in this, in this reallocation, we will not be re-selecting new grantees for this purpose. So they will be able to continue to expend these funds as we reallocate them, but we will welcome a new grant cycle going forward at the end of this one. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has one.
Thank you so much. That was the only question I had. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thanks, President Harden. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before counsel is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have two ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The first is 170-2024 to authorize the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a new contract with Change Healthcare Technology Enabled Services LLC for EMS billing, collection, and reporting services for the Division of Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $1,400,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The purpose of this contract is for EMS billing, collection, patient care reporting, hardware devices accompanying, accompanying extra equipment, third-party auditing, training, and onsite personnel as needed for the Division of Fire's third-party EMS reimbursement program. These billing, collection, and reporting services have generated a multitude of patient care information used by the Fire Division to better prepare EMS response protocols and in turn, response to citizens in a more effective manner. The Division also generates reports for various fire organizations that are cataloged nationwide. Revenue generated since inception of the program in 2002 amounted to over $289 million at the end of December 2023 and is deposited in the city's general fund. Director, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Council President Harden, Councilmember Remy, the Division of Fire has successfully implemented specialized EMS billing services and previously contracting with this entity, the Change Healthcare, and does not seek an alternate solution at this time. They've proven to be a qualified contractor to manage this service. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Howard, Dorrance, Faber, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 852-2024 to authorize the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with Alina Sheriff Futenova, DBA Village Ventures LLC for grant management services for the REACT program, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize an expenditure of $94,500 from the general government grant fund, and to declare an emergency. The Department of- The Department of Public Safety received a U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Award, funding the Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team, REACT, outreach efforts in October 2019. The project award period was granted a formal extension, a period of 12 months. The extension grant budget period is for September 30, 2023 through September 29, 2024. The grant extension will allow the completion of the initially approved program goals and permit an orderly phase-out of program objectives. Alina Sheriff Foutenova, DBA Village Ventures LLC, was selected as the grant program manager under the award, original award cycle. Village Venture LLC operates under the guidance of Alina S. and consists of a team of data scientists, a data QA admin, and a project manager. Over five years of the REACT operations, Alina S. has provided program management contract services to the team using the SAMSA-FR-CARA grant. Director, could you speak to the waiver on this particular ordinance as well, please?
Council President Harden, Councilmember Remy, we're asking for the waiver of competitive bidding due to Ms. Sheriff Foutenova's expertise in this grant and the nuances that she's learned about this grant over the last four years. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Aucar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember Weish. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities and Sustainability, I have three ordinances coming before council today. First, I have ordinance 0647-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Truco Construction Company, Inc., for the Blueprint Lyndon Hudson-McGuffey Manchester Ave Waterline Improvements and Celebrate One Blueprint Lyndon Hudson-McGuffey Sidewalk Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, and the Water Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund, and the Sewers Grant Sanitary Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of funds between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $23,423,354 to pay for the project. This project will improve water quality within the region by treating the surface runoff before discharges to the waterways with the construction of rain gardens, permeable paver parking lanes, and regional green infrastructure basins. The project will also install bumpouts, curb, sidewalks, and an eight-inch water main in the areas bounded generally by Weber Road, Cleveland Avenue, Hudson Street, and Hamilton Ave. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Aucar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0740-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to accept the 2023 EcoSmart Choice Sustainability Grant Award in the amount of $167,302.25 for the Division of Power to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify the contract with Solar United Neighbors and Impact Community Action for the Low to Moderate-Income Solar Co-op Program, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $167,302.25 from the Electricity Grants Fund to support this modification. The EcoSmart Choice Sustainability Grant Program was instituted by the American Municipal Power to return unused funds generated from the sale of renewable energy certificates to participating program members for solar installation. These funds are used to cover 100% of the installation cost for eligible Division of Power Low to Moderate-Income customers. It is estimated that this money will be able to fully fund installation for about 11 to 16 homes. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Aucar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0791-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Noble and Fourth Inflow Redirection Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 capital improvement budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,170,782.20 from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract is for the redirection of public sources of inflow of six acres of the Noble Fourth Sewer Shed in order to facilitate the redirection of the inflow. This contract includes the construction of 502 feet of 10-inch sanitary sewer along Noble Street between Fifth Street and Fourth Street. The new 10-inch sanitary sewer will connect to an existing 72-inch combined sewer at the intersection of Noble and Fourth. The project will reduce inflow and infiltration to the city's sanitary sewer system to mitigate sanitary sewer overflows to basements and waterways. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Aucar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have in my committee this evening. However, I do have a code change in rules and policy. Would it be okay if I continue? Thank you. The ordinance I'm bringing forth is ordinance 0550-2024 to enact Section 1163.24 of the Columbus City Codes to establish net metering service for Division of Power customers to connect distributed generation that uses advanced energy resources to the division's distribution system, to set conditions of service for net metering customers, and to determine how monthly energy charges will be measured. This code change will enable Department of Power customers to sell any surplus energy they may generate to Department of Power, Division of Powers. Such a policy will positively impact nearly 17,000 customers by, one, incentivizing customers' transition to renewable energy, and, two, enabling the department to remain competitive with other energy providers in the area which already offer net metering services to customers. Under this policy, customers will be eligible to receive a billing credit for the energy customers produce at home, offsetting their energy charge by the energy supplied to the grid in excess of use. One of the key drivers of pollution in Columbus is energy use and consumption. With commercial and residential building energy use contributing nearly 60% of the city's total carbon emissions, implementing a net metering policy advances this council's commitment to achieving the goals of our Columbus Climate Action Plan to achieve carbon neutrality by 2050 and a 45% reduction in emissions by 2030. We actually have two public speakers here today to kind of speak on this ordinance. I want to invite up Nolan Rutschling first to provide some remarks. And Nolan, my apologies for butchering your last name. I'm going to get it right at some point in time. But just come up, introduce yourself, and any organization you're representing today.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nolan Rutschling. I serve as the Managing Director of Energy Policy for the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund. Council President Harden, Chair Weish, thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony tonight in support of net metering. This ordinance will allow, as the council member said, all Columbus residents, businesses, churches, and community centers to be properly compensated for the solar they install on their facilities. That's really, really important right now, because we are in the age of implementation, the age of implementing the numerous federal, state, and local incentives available thanks to the Inflation Reduction Act. I do want to mention one of those programs that this ordinance will enable folks to be able to take advantage of, and that's the Impact Solar Program. That is an initiative to allow nonprofits to access low-cost solar and eventually potentially own the solar panels that would be on their rooftop or on their properties. That initiative is coordinated by the Columbus Regional Green Fund, or Green Bank. I want to specifically acknowledge the leadership of the Green Fund and the leadership of an organization called Community Renewable Energy, led by my friend and colleague Laura Ritchie, who is also probably Columbus's largest net metering advocate. That program is a great example of who this legislation is going to help. As soon as this legislation passes, I know those folks will be busy helping community centers and churches move forward on solar projects. So we strongly urge the passage of this legislation. I do want to briefly just emphasize, this is just the first step towards making the Columbus Division of Power a model for how to equitably reduce emissions while saving folks money. Municipal utilities, like the Columbus Division of Power, aren't beholden to shareholder demands, corporate greed, or just the regulatory barriers the state might put on other utilities in the state of Ohio. If we do this right, Columbus will lead the state and show that utilities can and should serve people first, not profits. I'll submit my written testimony, it's a little longer, it has some feedback for future iterations, but I just want to say thank you to Sustainable Columbus, the Columbus Division of Power, and to you, Councilmember Weish, for leading us on this ordinance. We see this as the first step towards folks getting access to solar, the next step being community solar, which the Columbus Climate Action Plan calls for passage by 2025. We want to emphasize to all members of council, to Sustainable Columbus, to the mayor's office, that we strongly encourage that to be an open, transparent process. So when the time comes for community solar, we encourage the businesses, the churches, the community groups within Division of Power territory be given the opportunity to participate in that process. Again, thank you so much, and we urge our passage. I'm happy to answer any questions today.
Pause there, see if there are any questions, comments from my colleagues. Nolan, appreciate you being here, appreciate you also sharing your commentary during our committee hearing. It's important that we have an open and transparent process, and that is my hope as Chair of the Public Utilities Sustainability Committee, to continue to do that throughout the year. So thank you for being here and providing testimony. Next, we have Joe Florida. Joe, welcome. Thank you for being here. The podium is yours. Please just introduce yourself and who you represent.
Thank you, Councilmember Weish. My name is Joe Florida. I'm the Executive Director of Power and Clean Future Ohio. I thank you for the opportunity to share some comments in support of the proposed net metering policy before you today. Power Clean Future Ohio is a statewide nonprofit organization that launched in February of 2020, and we work with local governments all across the state of Ohio on clean energy and climate action. We are proud to have worked with the city of Columbus for several years now, including advising on a variety of different clean energy and climate policies spanning the full spectrum of topics. But we are very excited to also have worked collaboratively with the city, including the Department of Public Utilities and Sustainable Columbus, on developing this net metering policy. What you have before you is a best practice. It is thorough research across a variety of Ohio communities, but also communities nationwide, that have implemented a net metering policy. I commend the council for doing the due diligence and making sure that we have done the right work to develop the right policy before you. Net metering is a key, critical component of being able to give access to residents in the city of Columbus rooftop solar. It is the only existing policy gap within the city of Columbus for customers that are served by the Columbus Division of Power, as the American Electric Power territory does currently have a net metering policy. I'll also just say it's fitting that we're passing this on tax day, as the Inflation Reduction Act has a whole variety of tax incentives available for residents to adopt clean energy. It's also an opportunity for us to help leverage those tax incentives, to help monetize them for low to moderate income households, and also to implement community solar. One thing I do want to emphasize is we are not quite there yet on community solar. We have to take this to the next step. And so I encourage you all to join all of us advocates in helping get there. I think we can design this policy in a way that makes sense to get to virtual net metering, which is what we need to be able to do, community solar, and really give all residents access to clean energy. So thank you for the opportunity to weigh in today. I'm excited to continue to work with the city on this, to push this forward, ensure we implement it in a smart and effective way. Thank you, and I encourage you to support this proposed policy.
Joe, thank you for being here. Again, I'll pause, see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Continue to appreciate your advocacy as well, and as well as attending the hearing to provide your testimony. It's always appreciated, the work that your organization does across the state of Ohio is so important, and if we can kind of be the leading edge of that here in Columbus, that is the goal ultimately for my office, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Director Shaki, my apologies, I should have kicked it to you, given all the work that you have done on this code change. Just see if you have any thoughts or any additions to add.
Chair Weish, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to all members of council for your support of our net metering policy. Mr. Rutschling and Mr. Florida did a great job summarizing the work that we've done in the open and transparent way that we passed and worked to create a net metering policy that's a best-in-class net metering policy. And the great news is, this legislation also authorizes our ability to do community solar, which is the next step, as you've heard from the folks testifying today. And as Sustainable Columbus does in everything that they do, that will also be an open and transparent process as we move forward with program design and implementation. Thank you, Chair Weish.
Thank you for providing some remarks. Seeing no additional questions. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just have one quick. I just noticed that today, especially we have lots of residents, this is a big deal. How will residents, I feel like all utility bills are complicated, and many times, there's many, many lines you don't understand. How do we get to this total? How will residents understand how this will impact them, and what these changes, how it will affect them and their monthly bills?
It should ultimately be seamless for our residents, but I will kick it to the Deputy Director to share.
So that's a wonderful question, and it is fortuitous as well that you saw the legislation for Solar United Neighbors today. Solar United Neighbors is a trusted nonprofit partner that we work with to help people to navigate the solar process, or going solar, as we often say. Columbus works with Solar United Neighbors on two market rate co-ops each year, and then also this low and moderate income co-op that we legislated for last year. For folks that have questions about navigating the process, I would suggest working with Solar United Neighbors, but they can reach out to us, and we can certainly help navigate them over to Solar United Neighbors and those co-ops. Also, Division of Power has worked on some resources for folks who just have basic questions about net metering and how net metering works.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? This is, as you said, Councilmember, a big deal for the city and for our customers. I would love to say that we did all the work in 100 days, but the reality is, the city has been working on this for over a year, and I'm just excited to be the one to kind of help carry it across the finish line. So kudos to all of council members, as well as to the department who've worked on this policy. It is truly a big deal for our city and our commitment to be the greenest city in the country. So with that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Aucar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And that is all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While we're still in rules and policy, we're going to go ahead and finish up this meeting by turning it over to Councilmember De Alcar.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, we have two code changes from the Recreation and Parks Department. Ordinance 697-2024 to amend Columbus City Codes Title 19, Chapter 19, Section 919.24, Park Rules and Regulations, Fireworks, in order to address changes to the state law regarding fireworks and to reflect the amendments to Title 25 of the Columbus Fire Prevention Code. This ordinance is merely a technical change to some reference code sections related to fireworks. The passage of a recent Ohio House bill required that the city reconstitute its prohibition for any person to possess, discharge, ignite, or explode fireworks within the city without the consent of the Division of Fire. This code change replaced Chapter 2533 with Chapter 2566. As such, the department must now amend its own section of code regarding park rules and regulations to ensure the new chapter is now referenced when discussing the prohibition of fireworks in parks. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Aucar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weish, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 698-2024 to amend various sections within Columbus City Codes Chapter 921 regarding watercraft on reservoirs. The intent of this code change is to simply codify the standard operation of Greg's Reservoir. The vast majority of changes contained in this ordinance are simple updates to terminology and definitions to keep code in line with ORC changes over the years. Aside from these changes, there are three minor updates to reflect what has been standard practice on the waterway. First, this ordinance permits safety vessels longer than 22 feet, while still ensuring this will only be utilized for safety purposes and not as a way to permit larger recreational vehicles. Second, this legislation updates required rowing distance from shore for rowing shells, now requiring them to operate as close to shore as practical while maintaining a straight-line course. This update reflects inability to row a straight-line course along the uneven shoreline of the river.
This update reflects inability to row a straight-line course along the uneven shoreline of the reservoir, but still maintains a quarter in the center of the reservoir for powerboat traffic. Lastly, this ordinance gets rid of the two-way rowing shell traffic pattern, codifying a one-way counterclockwise pattern that eliminates risks of rowing shells colliding with both each other and powerboats. Again, the changes captured in this legislation have primarily been in practice for the last 10 years. An emergency amendment has been requested by the department so that this codified in time for the boating season to begin. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I first move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
And I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Seeing no further business coming before council, just a reminder, there is no council meeting next Monday, the 22nd, the next meeting of city council will be Monday, April 29th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcara, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned, we'll take zoning in five minutes.
Come to order, clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deoc, Howard Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
No.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deoc, Howard Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved, will not go to the zoning committee, President Pro Tim, Doran's chair of that committee, all members served on it, Councilor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before beginning, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation for ordinances that have a disapproval from recommending body, or if we have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. Only those who own property within 125 feet of an address that is subject to a variance request are legally able to make public comments on a council variance. All speakers on council variances, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission and applicants are always able to speak on an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. This evening, we have seven public speakers signed up to speak on two separate ordinances this evening. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you answer and it pays a penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Joseph Rose, the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Chris Lorr, from the Division of Planning, Deputy Director for Housing Strategies, Aaron Prosser, Assistant Director of Development, Bill Webster, and Dan Bleschman from Traffic Management, from the Department of Public Service, have been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 0944-2024 to amend, ordinance number 1130-90 passed June 13, 1990, for the property located at 4080 Business Park Drive by repeal in Section 3 and replace with a new Section 3 to modify the limitation text as pertains to allowable uses within parcel A, parcel, and parcel B. The ordinance 1130-90 passed back in 1990, rezoned approximately 34 acres of the 4080 Business Park Road to a limited commercial manufacturing uses with three parcels known as parcel A, B, and C. This ordinance amends that allowable uses within parcels A and B to include truck, utility trailer, RV, sales, rental, leasing, and automotive maintenance and repair uses. The remaining development standards from the ordinance from 1990 remain unchanged. The proposal has approvals from city staff and the West Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have question comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend to emergency.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deoc, Howard Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And finally, I move to amend for passage, I move for passage as amended.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deoc, Howard Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0965-2024 to rezone 2223 Cleveland Avenue, being 0.64-plus acres located in northwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Kemore Row from C3 Commercial District, CPD Commercial Plan Development District, and R3 Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The site consists of two parcels, developed with a library and parking lot and one undeveloped parcel. The requested rezoning will allow an expansion of the existing library and new parking lots. The proposals have approvals from city staff, Development Commission, and the South London Area Commission. I believe we have folks from this area commission here with us tonight, so thanks for being here. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to amend as emergency.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deoc, Howard Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. And next, I move for passage as amended.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deoc, Howard Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0971-2024 to rezone 1826 East Livingston Avenue, being 3.27-plus acres located in northeast corner of East Livingston Avenue and Rhodes Avenue from N Manufacturing District to AR2 Apartment Residential District. The site consists of one parcel developed with a warehouse in the N Manufacturing District. The requested AR2 Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development. A concurrent council variance is also on our agenda, which we'll consider momentarily to permit a 5,500 square foot feet of commercial space. The request also includes variances for building height, building setback, perimeter yard, and a parking space reduction from 218 spaces down to 162 provided spaces. The parcel is in the current draft proposed zoning code map released last week, and this project combines density, affordability, and proximity to public transit, all goals of the new proposed zoning code, while also allowing for securing approvals from each formally recognized recommending body before coming to council, including city staff, the Development Commission, and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission. We do have a number of public speakers signed to speak on this rezoning ordinance. Before that happens, we'll have a presentation from city staff. Mr. Joe Rose, the floor is yours first.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. The 3.27-acre site consists of one parcel developed with a warehouse in the N Manufacturing District. The site is subject to ordinance number 1734-2022, CV 21-151, which was submitted for Ohio Housing Finance Agency funding, and passed by city council on June 27, 2022, which allowed a mixed-use development. The ordinance was conditioned on the applicant completing a follow-up rezoning within one year of funding or within two years of the effective date of that ordinance. The requested AR2 Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development. A concurrent council variance, CV 23-070, has been filed to allow 5,500 square feet of commercial space, and that request also includes variances for building height, building setback, perimeter yard, and a parking space reduction from 218 spaces to 162. The site is within the boundaries of the near-south side plan, which recommends employment center land uses at this location. Staff supports proposal as the mix of commercial and residential uses is compatible with the mixed-use nature of the East Livingston Avenue corridor and the adjacent residential neighborhood to the west. Staff notes that this site is within the initial focus area of the zoning initiative and the contemplated mixed-use zoning delegation, which will allow for ground floor residential uses. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Any questions for my colleagues, representatives from Building and Zoning Services at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the Department of Development. We'll hear from Assistant Director, Mr. Bill Webster. Mr. Webster, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. From an economic opportunity perspective, this site has been a commercial site for many years. We feel that in order to encourage economic opportunities for the community, the best use for the site is a higher and denser residential use. Now, that being said, this is not a demonstration of a lack of economic investment in the community. In fact, in recent years, the department has invested upwards of 4.4 million in a combination of UIRF, small business grants, as well as the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. This includes through our Accelerate Columbus program, two facade grants, as well as the decorative lighting project along Fairwood Avenue to take place later this year. Essentially, what we're trying to say here is that we feel that in order to create more economic opportunity that will support economic growth, that we need to keep encouraging a more densely populated development of the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Any questions from my colleagues to the Department of Development at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to Mr. Christopher Lorr, Planning Manager with the Division of Planning. Mr. Lorr?
Thank you, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. With regards to this application, planning supports the proposal. Although the near-south side plan recommends employment center at this location, the mix of commercial and residential uses proposed is compatible with the mixed-use nature of the Livingston Avenue corridor and the adjacent residential neighborhood to the west. The proposed uses are also currently permitted at this location through previously approved CV 21-151. Therefore, staff supports the proposed AR2 district for this rezoning, as well as the companion council variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorr. Any questions for my colleagues for the Division of Planning at this time? Seeing none, our next speaker is Ms. Erin Prosser, the Deputy Director for Housing Strategies. Ms. Prosser, welcome to council.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. The proposed rezoning at 1826 East Livingston Avenue supports the Columbus Housing Strategy by building new housing in a neighborhood which is experiencing change and at risk for losing affordability. The proposed housing meets three elements of the housing strategy. The first is build. In order to slow the growth of housing prices in our region, our city, and within individual neighborhoods, we need to build enough housing. Driving Park has seen increased occupancy while not adding new housing units in the past several years, which has constrained the available housing in the neighborhood. In the three primary census tracts that make up the Driving Park neighborhood, between 2010 and 2022, the vacancy rate dropped from 23% to 15%. And in that same time, the census tracts saw a net loss of 153 housing units. More people calling the neighborhood home, but actually fewer homes for those families to live in. This resulted in a 43% increase in rents in that same census tracts between 2010 and 2022. While we don't have census data available post-2022, we expect that given the increased housing scarcity throughout the city, that those vacancy rates have continued to drop, and this lack of available units will continue to drive up the price of housing throughout the Driving Park neighborhood. The second part of the housing strategy that this supports is invest. The housing strategy calls for investment in income-restricted and protected affordable housing in all neighborhoods throughout the city, and particularly in neighborhoods seeing a loss of market affordability. The proposed housing will serve households between 30% and 80% of the area median income, which equates to annual income for an individual between $20,850 to $55,600 annually. The average household income in the three census tracts that make up Driving Park neighborhood is $40,385 annually. So therefore, many of the neighborhood's current residents will qualify for this affordable housing opportunity and provide options for them to remain in their neighborhoods in the face of change. And finally, include. Access to income-restricted and protected affordable housing will be important along a corridor that is going to see investment in new transit through the Linkus Initiative, and one which has proximity to existing job centers, amenities, and other opportunities. While housing scarcity will drive up housing prices throughout the region, in these locations, we expect to see accelerated housing price increases as the market responds. Therefore, this investment will be critical to maintaining economic diversity in the neighborhood moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. Any questions from council members for Assistant Director at this time? Seeing none, the final presentation is from Mr. Dan Bleschman from the Department of Public Service. Mr. Bleschman?
Thank you, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. With regards to these applications, the requested variance to reduce the number of required parking spaces is supported by the Department of Public Service in consideration of the proposed mix of uses on this site and the urban location of this project. This project will be providing the necessary Columbus multimodal thoroughfare plan right-of-way dedication along the East Livingston Avenue frontage. This additional right-of-way will help accommodate future roadway improvements along East Livingston Avenue, adjacent to this site, that are currently in design by the city, for which there has been an award of grant funding through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. The Department of Public Service has no other specific concerns and supports this application.
Thank you, Mr. Bleschman. Any questions from council members at this time for Department of Public Service? Seeing none, we will move on. We have a number of public speakers. Before them, we will allow the applicant to make a presentation. I believe Mr. Jonathan McKay is here with Woda Cooper. Welcome back to council, sir.
President Harden, zoning chair Dorans, city council members, my name is Jonathan McKay, and I am the Vice President of Development with Woda Cooper Companies, Inc. Each development becomes better the more constructive input and information is collected, considered, and assembled into the final proposed project. Development team has worked to develop, customize, and continuously refine the proposed project before you in conjunction with many local community and civic development groups and organizations, including Driving Park Civic Association, Livingston Avenue Area Commission, and others. Early in this process, which started in January of 2022, Driving Park Civic Association and Livingston Avenue Area Commission made a number of requests for changes to the proposed development. The development team was able to accommodate many of these. First, there was a request to redesign the building fronting East Livingston Avenue to a zero setback overlay standard. The development team agreed, and the design was enhanced, so that buildings were pushed closer to streets with parking in the back. Street presence has been augmented and reflects the mixed-use look and feel. Second, there was a request to create first-floor commercial uses in the building fronting East Livingston Avenue, since this is a major transit corridor. The development team agreed, and the building design was revised to provide over 5,000 square feet of commercial space for commercial uses. We are actively pursuing tenants at this time for opportunities in the space. Third, there was a request to reduce density. The initial plan called for 134 units, which the development team reduced to 118 units. Fourth, there was a desire for mixed-income and market-rate units. The development team agreed and committed 10% of the units in the building fronting East Livingston Avenue as market-rate units. Furthermore, a good neighbor letter was presented and executed in March of 2023. This letter includes communications, commitments, and ongoing dialogue with the community as the development moves forward. The development team expects periodic updates on progress and will stay in touch with both Driving Park Civic Association and Livingston Avenue Area Commission. I'm certainly cognizant that change is never easy, but the development team continues to believe that approving these ordinances will revitalize a long, underutilized site, which includes a blighted vacant structure into high-quality affordable housing along a major transit line, which is in high demand as the city continues to grow. This will in turn spur further economic investment while also improving the quality of life for numerous families. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Any questions from council members for the applicant at this time? Thank you. Ms. McKay, I may call you back up after we have our public speakers, so thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, we do have five public speakers to sign up to speak on this ordinance. I'll call them up to the podium in the order they received. Once they get here, if you want to state your name, any relationship to the property you have, and folks will have three minutes for their comments. The first individual to have signed up to speak on this ordinance is Mr. John Coats, but my understanding is that they would like Stacy Green to speak in their stead? Welcome back to council.
Before we begin, I'd like to make one correction. Communication and transparency have been a problem throughout this. Woda has not executed a community benefit agreement with us. We went down that path, but they presented us with a document. There was no communication, and there is no executed document. The other thing, before I launch into this, Mr. and Mrs. Coats live 125 feet. So, I'm bad with space, but I'm just asking you to entertain me for a minute. If your chairs are 125 feet from that back wall, that's how close they are to the cookie factor. We've asked for them to communicate with us on the demolition, on the asbestos removal. I heard from Ohio EPA today, as I was coming down here, that the removal was already restarted. So they could be sitting in their living room while asbestos is being sucked into their HVAC. So there has been no communication. That's part of the problem. Okay? So, in terms of our statement, that's the gist of it. This is supposed to be a community agreement. We've always supported affordable housing. We came to you in 2013 with a proposal for Buckeye Community Hope Foundation. We came back with Gertrude Woods. We came back again, even with Woda Cooper. Woda Cooper is in our neighborhood at the Livingston. In terms of redlining, when 70 investors tell you the city of Columbus is not committed to your neighborhood, and even Woda Cooper confirms that because they said the $40 million that they're investing in our neighborhood, they would only invest because it's 100% financed. I asked the question very specifically. If you cannot get 100% financing, will you do this? And they said no. So there is no commitment to our neighborhood, whether it's from the city of Columbus or from the developers, which is a problem. It means we're redlined. And in terms of this process, again, I wanted to meet with most of you. I've contacted the older council members several times to have a conversation with you, so that we could talk privately, because a lot of these issues are, quite frankly, embarrassing, and I did not want them heard in public. I wanted to share them with you privately. So, in terms of safety, you've got the traffic study now. Livingston, our corridor, is six times more deadly than any corridor in the metropolitan area. It's eight times higher serious injury rate. There have been 900, almost 900 accidents on our corridor, our crashes on our corridor, 60 right at this intersection, including one death. Councilmember Dorans, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, Councilmember Favor, Councilmember Remy, you voted no to McNaulson. McNaulson's two lanes, Livingston's four, and six times more deadly. Why don't our children deserve your protection? In terms of this building, this building is on a brownfield site, a hazardous, toxic brownfield site. Just so you know, Columbus's progressive liberal blue Democrats rezoning a hazardous, toxic brownfield for affordable housing is a viral story. It is not a local story. Again, to protect you, we made a conscious decision not to talk to the press, but the press is now coming to us. So, when you vote tonight, yes or no, I want you to understand what you're voting yes to, because I wanted to have these conversations, or we wanted to have these conversations with you privately. First off, we've been in housing court because of an illegal operating waste management to the south of this building. Currently, we're in housing court. They've got violations for nauseous toxic smells because of its waste management. They've got air and sound violations because of the exhaust from their facility. Again, to the front, you've got a street that's six times more deadly, and then you're putting it on a brownfield site. Cleveland had the opportunity to build a prison on a brownfield site, a prison, and they chose no. They said for the safety and well-being of adult inmates, they would not proceed. They would do what we are suggesting happens with our facility, and that is remediate it for commercial use. Councilmember Remy, you came to our Civic Association meeting last October before the election. We did not know at that time, but it was actually you who put forth the motion to do the remediation grant for $200,000. $200,000 is horrifically inconsistent with what was there. So, again, we went back to the Ohio EPA, and Councilmember Favor, we know that you second that. So all of you have known for over two years that this was a hazardous and toxic brownfield. Over two years, we've been coming to you, asking how we prepare our neighborhood for the demolition of this, but more importantly, what are your safeguards for protecting the people that you're putting there? There are plenty of studies that show what it is like to live on or near hazardous and toxic waste, including right here in Columbus, because your own Columbus Public Health have confirmed that right in our neighborhood, we have elevated cancer, COPD, asthma, all consistent with exposure to hazardous and toxic substances. I'm going to back up for just one second. When you vote today, you are voting to, only way children will ever live there is because you vote to rezon this for housing. The only way a child crossing the street can be injured on this particular section, which, again, 60 crashes have occurred from the time span from 2017 to 2021. We had a woman that was just killed in a crosswalk just last week. Do you even know how many crashes have occurred, how many deaths have occurred since the numbers were reported in 2021? Do you even care? Because you cared enough to perform McNaulson to vote no to protect their children. So we're asking you to protect ours. Don't put them on this hazardous street, right next to an illegally-run waste management company, and on a toxic hazardous brownfield that Cleveland decided was too toxic and hazardous for inmates. We want to remediate this for commercial. Questions?
Any questions from council members at this time? Councilmember Weich?
Just one comment, and I'm a newbie, so my apologies, we haven't had a chance to sit down and connect. I will kind of take back your comment about an illegal waste management site happening in the area to the department to get a better understanding, so I just wanted to let you know that. I appreciate you pointing that out.
It's currently in environmental court. We've been fighting that for three years, but these are the issues that we wanted to talk with you privately, so that we could make progress on properly. We've always wanted to work with you, but nobody responds, except for Councilmember Bangston. I thank you very much. He actually responded, and we had a meeting with him last week. But the rest of you, not the new people, but the rest of you, Remy even came to our Civic Association meeting. We asked questions, and we never heard back from him. And the questions were, will these people even know that they're living on a brownfield? Are you going to tell them it's a brownfield? Are you just going to let them have strange diseases pop up in their children and in the future, and not even know where it came from? Is that the plan? Is that a housing strategy? Is that ghetto by design? Because it sure sounds like it. And to finalize this, I know I've run over, so I apologize. I finalize this, but there are protocols and procedures in place that are to protect us, and unfortunately, all of them have failed in this particular instance. So we applauded Mayor Gunther when he invited the Department of Justice in to review the police department. So we are going to be drafting a letter to Mayor Gunther to ask the Department of J to come in and review how we ended up here today with no transparency, no accountability, and no communication, because we've heard from your department, who all recommended this? How can you recommend housing hundreds of children on a brownfield on a street that's six times more deadly, five times higher injury than any other street in this metropolitan area? That's your vote today. Again, I want to make sure you're not voting without understanding all the elements. We wanted to do this privately, but you chose not to engage us privately, because we did not want to embarrass you in such a public forum like this. Any additional questions?
Thank you, Ms. Green. Anything else from council members?
I just wanted to clarify a couple things, and I think I'm going to ask the directors around asbestos and remediation of brownfields. To be clear, just because something is a brownfield, which most parcels in the city are, just because of nature of cities, doesn't mean it's something that can't be built there. So there has to be remediation done before any building permits are even issued, so we'll make sure we get to that. I do want to clarify maybe where you're getting some of your data from, because I don't want this to simply be hyperbole, because some of it seems a little exaggerated. But also want to point out as well that the goalpost is consistently moving. When you met with me just a couple weeks ago, it wasn't about brownfields, it wasn't about children, it was about economic development. Before that, it was that the site wasn't, you know, good enough for residential, and it was the size of the building that's gone down. Some of my colleagues have had conversations with some other members on your Civic Association that says it's a waste of a parcel because it's not dense enough. So the goalpost continues to simply move, and I'm just being very clear, you're talking about our private conversations that we had.
Right.
Not once did you mention brownfields.
Correct, because we were told we had to.
Not once did you mention asbestos.
We were told we had to follow the process, and we've asked for two years, what is the process?
Okay.
I was told I couldn't circumbit the process, so of course I didn't bring it up, because I was told, don't circumbit the process. I've got an email that asks me not to do that. In terms of the brownfield, just so you know, we, again, because your remediation grant for $200,000 was consistently inconsistent with the Columbus, city of Columbus Phase 2 report, we went to the Ohio EPA, and the Ohio EPA has confirmed for us, everything that has been removed up to this point was done so illegally, and our community has been exposed to an illegal remediation. We asked Woda Cooper, what was that situation? They said only 90, 95% has been removed, only 5% remains. That's the reason why they arrived at the $200,000. So we've already been exposed, which is consistent with the United States.
Ms. Green, I'm going to start to move on to our next speaker. So on that particular point, so the applicant's going to come back up here, and I believe myself and other members will have questions with them about the remediation. Those are state requirements, so that's not something that the city does, and whether or not there's city funding that's involved with the remediation, that responsibility is on the applicant, and regulated very strictly by the state of Ohio. So just to be very, very clear, if we're talking about... So, just to be very, very clear, if we're talking about you stating that folks are saying things are being done illegally, I just want to be very, very clear. We're also going to ask that of the applicant to demonstrate here, because again, to Councilmember Bankston's point, we've had a lot of hyperbole about this project coming back and forth for two years. And also to be very clear, I have not received an invitation to speak with you about this project. I've met with other people involved with this, a number of folks. You and I sat down two years ago. We talked about this in my office. We, we've talked about this before. But to be very clear, you're calling out individual members for not meeting. Folks have met with different people in the neighborhood. I have not received an invitation to have this conversation with you.
The email is dated June 29, 2022, the first one, and it was all about remediation, because we wanted to get on top of this and understand. So, I understand I'm out of time, but I do have receipts. So, again, we have reached out to you consistently, because we did not want to have this conversation in this public forum. It's disquisitous to you. It needs to be a conversation. It doesn't need to be tied to three minutes. But this is what we've been forced to do. And in terms of the hyperbole, I'm happy to meet with you to discuss what's hyperbole. But the number that I gave you in terms of 95%, that is a Woda Cooper number. In terms of everything being removed up until that point, that's the Ohio EPA, and I'm happy to give you their contact information.
Thank you. Next speaker to come for counsel on this rezoning is, again, Mr. Booker Coats signed up to speak. However, I believe that they have asked Daniel Diller to speak in their stead. Ms. Diller, welcome back to counsel.
So, before I start, I, I have met with many of you, and I have talked about my personal economic development argument. So, just to clarify, with Ms. Coats today, we are going to be focused on safety. So, I don't want anyone to feel like I'm moving the ball or moving the goalposts. This is just, you know, in, in context of us speaking together. So, as Stacy mentioned, we had a pedestrian death on Livingston Avenue last week. Mildred Ann was crossing the street at a crosswalk and was killed by a hit-and-run driver. Two years ago, when we asked that you voted no on this project, safety was one of the issues raised. With the rec center being directly across the street from this proposed development, we knew that there was cause for concern, because young children absolutely are going to cross the street, because they're going to want to go to the park. They're going to want to go play basketball. They want to be at the rec center. But the difference between two years ago and today is that we have a lot more data. You know, we have real data, not just us saying, hey, like, this is a concern. And so, we now know that we were very right to bring those safety concerns to you two years ago and that you guys were wrong when you told us, oh, everything is fine. Two years ago, you told us city officials saw no need to conduct a traffic study specifically for this project. We didn't get an explanation on that. We were just told, hey, they said this is fine, should be safe. Now, interestingly, I had the opportunity to be a part of the steering committee for the broader corridor traffic study. And during those meetings, Rose and Livingston, the exact intersection where Woda's proposing this development, where there will be many families, was noted as one of the highest crash points along our corridor. And our corridor is truly one of the deadliest in the metropolitan area, not just Columbus. Crashes are six times more deadly, five times more likely to cause serious injury. That's real data from consultants that did work on the study. So, really, we wonder how in the world did public safety conclude two years ago that there were no traffic concerns at all, no safety concerns? It was also discovered in those meetings that there really is no way to install a stoplight at that intersection. We have the fire station to the, to the, to the west. We have the railroad crossing to the east. It's, there is no real way to ensure pedestrian safety. And with children that are going to be living there, it's a huge problem. We also know based on data that we can expect an increase of about 200 cars per day with this proposed development. 200 additional vehicles on an already unsafe street with no real plan to truly ensure safety. And you might be thinking, the current traffic study, which is currently in the design phase, will compensate for skipping the traffic study two years ago. But it won't. And the reason why is because Woda will have constructed this project, and people will have moved in before the street improvements have even begun to take place. So, we can't retroactively, you know, decide how we're going to address that. I only have like a couple more sentences. So, there really is no way to what, to know whether these planned improvements will actually increase and ensure safety at this intersection. And I know that has got to be something that you guys all take very seriously. So, they're really, in my, in our view, there's no way this should move forward in good faith without a study and plan specific to this development. The only reason someone hasn't lost their life at this intersection is because nobody lives there. That's really the only reason. Fish Burger directly next door has been hit twice. Cars ran completely into the building. It's amazing that no one was hurt. Lost control, run off the road. The previous restaurant in the same exact location, Tootsie's, also hit by a car, run off the road. Daycare Center, directly across the street, car ran into it. Driving Car Community Center sign, hit by a car. Just about every single light pole in this vicinity has been mowed down by cars that have lost control, run off the road. So, there are so many reasons why this parcel, when it was assessed for development, was suited, was cited as not suitable for residential, and this is safety is likely paramount among them. So, imagine that this moves forward today, and you, you choose not to really take heed to what we're saying here, and a child is struck simply trying to cross the street. I mean, what, what then? Who gets the blame? You know, who, who do we, who do we call? You know, there's nothing, like, what can we do? I mean, I can tell you, if I lost a loved one, I, I would, I would look to each and every one of you to say, well, why, when you knew there was a huge safety concern? Why did you, why, why didn't you do anything about it? So, we really don't feel like it can move forward in good faith, just knowing the danger that it really presents to pedestrians, and we urge you to do the right thing. We know you voted down McNaughton. There's no real difference between this and that, other than we actually have more lanes than that one did. I personally think, and I know Mrs. Coats would agree, one, pedestrian death is more than enough. It's more than enough. It's too many. Mildred Ann should not have lost her life, point blank period, I mean, crossing the street at a crosswalk. So, please don't let families that will potentially be housed at this development be guinea pigs, for lack of a better word. We're talking about human beings, and I really don't think we should be gambling with their lives.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions or comments from councilmembers? Thank you. The next speaker to come for counsel on this rezoning is Ms. Jaclyn Dyna. Ms. Dyna, welcome to counsel.
Hi, first time. Hi, I'm Dr. Jaclyn Dyna, and I'm the interim CEO of Sprout 5. We are a community-based childcare center with four locations across the city of Columbus. We have partnered with Woda on three current projects. We are looking to partner with them in this project as well and would be implementing two classrooms on-site at this building. I did want to speak a little bit to the benefit of the childcare and the benefit to pairing childcare with affordable housing. In particular, a very important piece of affordable and subsidized childcare is the publicly-funded childcare benefit, which is very closely tied to attendance. Many people here may know, but to, for centers to receive full reimbursement for publicly-funded childcare, children must attend at least 25 hours a week. What we end up having is families that are facing a lot of barriers to meeting that attendance requirement. These, specifically for us, what we find is these barriers are transportation, either unreliable transportation or using public transportation. Specifically then, having the childcare on-site at, on the housing complex reduces that transportation barrier completely. In addition, we often find that there are families that have non-traditional working hours. Maybe they are working third shift, or they are working longer hours. Having childcare at their residence also reduces some of the barriers around getting to and accessing that childcare during their open hours. And finally, oftentimes, we are seeing families that are experiencing other hardships, maybe hospital stays or other issues that are, you know, making it more difficult for them to be traveling back and forth between work and home and childcare. And having the childcare paired with affordable housing just reduces all of those barriers. Second, we found a really unique benefit to this partnership that we were not expecting. And that is, we have found that we have had a lot of residents, a lot, we've had about three or four, which is a good percentage of residents apply to be teachers and then also have enroll their children that are between the ages of birth to five in the childcare program. So, not only are we having residents that are enrolling their children, they're also having employment through Sprout 5. So, that was a really unique benefit that we weren't necessarily expecting, that we found to be just overall beneficial to these individuals. And finally, I wanted to point out the kindergarten readiness rate in the city of Columbus. You all probably also know that we're at about 42% of children who are not kindergarten-ready in the city of Columbus, and just expanding access to high-quality childcare is going to, is going to help reduce that rate. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any question or comments from councilmembers? No, appreciate you being here. I do want to apologize. I skipped over one of our speakers again. So, Mr. George Holloman, I apologize. It is your turn, sir. Welcome back to counsel. Good to see you again.
Good evening, President Harden, councilmembers and citizens of Columbus. I am George Holloman, a resident of Driving Park and a former resident of the Hanford Village. I've lived in the Livingston Avenue corridor for over 63 of my 73 years, and I've witnessed the good and the bad of the area. Today, I'm speaking about the proposed rezoning variances at 1826 East Livingston Avenue, site of the proposed Woda development. While it's true that Columbus has an affordable housing problem, I do not believe this project is the best use for this property. I am not against affordable housing. I've had family members and friends who had lived in affordable housing, lived in projects, subsidized housing, and received subsidized payments for housing. I've served on two area commissions. I have supported affordable housing proposals. This project is different. It's very different. It would be built on the largest parcel in the area that could be developed as an economic driver for the community of Driving Park, Livingston Avenue, and the city of Columbus. But it appears once again that by supporting this development, the South End is being designated as an area for low-to-moderate home affordable housing. This is a continuation of treating the area of the near South Side as a low-status area. This area is south of I-70, east of Parsons Avenue, excluding Children's Nationwide Hospital to Allen Creek Drive. Low-status neighborhoods, ghettos by design, are areas where inequality is assumed by people who live there and also assumed by people who don't live there, where the development is based on the poverty-level economic maintenance theory. It's based on liquor stores, dollar stores, health clinics, and affordable housing, run by corporations that profit from the inequality while receiving subsidies from public funds assisted by nonprofits and given tax abatements by politicians. Most importantly, and this fact has not been stressed by any documents or anybody in the public domain, in July of 2011, the city of Columbus, Columbus's Department of Development, Economic Development Division, issued a list of Columbus Brownfield project sites. Included in the projects, Brownfield project sites, which are hazardous, hazardous, toxic areas, was the Hoffman Container Company at 1826 East Livingston Avenue, the same site that Woda is proposing to build an affordable housing project. Now, I've done my own research on brown sites, on the areas that were listed. They were listed on the 2011 project site. The Jeffrey Mining Company, that area is remediated in 2002. Building was started in 2012. It's set fallow for 10 years after it was remediated. The Columbus Coater Fabric Site was remediated in 2007. Building didn't start till 2017, another 10 years. Gally Fields was remediated in 2007. And because it was developed as a business technology corridor, it was stipulated that it had to set fallow for two years minimum. That area now is where Spectrum is, OSU Hospital, those areas, it's a business area. No one is living on those fields. But Woda comes to you to city council now and is proposing to demolish, remediate, and build apartments on a brownfield within a year with no fallow period. This is immoral and unacceptable. And I implore this council to not be part of this experiment on people who are expecting an affordable, healthy, safe place to live. Early settlers in this country gave Native Americans measles-infected blankets. Remember the Tuskegee, Tuskegee experiment? Where people were provided health care, then had their trust betrayed by those in charge by failing to disclose the toxic exposures and health risks to those involved in that study and their families, and the families are still suffering to this day. I don't want to be one of those people, and I hope you don't want to be one of those people, where you put children on a toxic field. You could remediate, build in one year, and put children and people on a toxic, a brownfield. Hope you don't want to be one of those people that 20 years, 30 years down the way, that your children would say, well, my parents had a part in this experiment. Thank you. Any questions?
Yep. Any questions from councilmembers? Thank you. The last speaker to come for counsel is Mr. Michael Aaron. Mr. Aaron, welcome back to counsel.
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Dorans. I have a communication from our president of the Livingston Area Merchants Association, President Nina Kradoff. Dear councilmembers, on behalf of the Livingston Area Merchants Association, we write to express our full support for the variances and ordinances 0971-2024 and 0972-2024 requested by Woda Cooper for their redevelopment project at 1826 East Livingston Avenue, affectionately known as the Old Cookie Factory. Our endorsement comes after extensive discussions and meetings with Woda Cooper, during which we've gained invaluable insight into the proposed Granville Woods Lofts project. The revitalization of the Farmcrest Bakery's building into the Granville Woods Lofts is a commendable endeavor that aligns seamlessly with Lama's mission to foster growth and development in the Driving Park community. We applaud Woda Cooper's commitment to providing much-needed affordable housing options in our neighborhood. The prospect of 118 apartments catering to families earning between 30% to 80% of the area median income is truly transformative. Moreover, the inclusion of over 5,000 square feet of retail space is a welcome addition that promises to invigorate commercial activity along Livingston Avenue, reminiscent of its vibrant past during World War II. This development not only fulfills a critical housing need, but also bolsters economic prospects for local businesses, creating a more dynamic and sustainable community for residents and entrepreneurs alike. Lama wholeheartedly endorses the Granville Woods Lofts project and urges the Columbus City Council to grant the necessary variances and ordinances. We believe this initiative embodies the spirit of progress and inclus- We believe this initiative embodies the spirit of progress and inclusivity, setting a positive precedent for future developments in our neighborhood. I would just like to address a couple of items specifically regarding the concern for safety. The city of Columbus and the U.S. federal government combined will be spending twenty-four million dollars to remediate any safety concerns on Livingston Avenue. The safety plan is already complete, we're now putting the pretty pieces together, like how many bushes and what kind of trees and what color the benches will be. But the safety concerns have been eliminated. Livingston Avenue in two years will be two lanes only, two lanes, totally safe for the folks living along Livingston Avenue. If we're concerned about COPD and emphysema, I will point fingers at the numerous plethora of carryouts that sell singles and Lucy's and the huge amount of tobacco usage still in the community. Economic drivers, this building has set vacant for over sixty years. Whomever would have liked to have developed it would have come by now. It's the first thing you see when you come into Livingston Avenue, into our community. And Driving Park is no longer a poor community. Twenty years ago, we could have talked about these poverty numbers, and poverty still exists, but not to the extent as the people that are paying increased taxes. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Any questions from council members? CNN, I'll invite the applicant back, Mr. Jonathan McKay, to address council on the questions or concerns articulated by our speakers this evening.
Just want to touch on a few things, predominantly the environmental. We've had two visits with the Ohio EPA to make sure, make sure any abatement is done using best practices. As part of this, this occurred in May of two thousand and twenty-three and then March of this year, and that led to an approved remediation plan. In addition, yes, the site is a brown field, this is something that the applicant has inherited. However, the applicant has secured a state of Ohio brown field remediation grant, the purpose of which is to make sure that the brown field site would be cleaned up and then operational for economic development activity. We're obviously not going to put something that would not be suitable for residential use. Ultimately, this will be a great residential property and it will be cleaned up, which is something that we inherited. In addition, in terms of the safety, I just want to make sure that in terms of any supportive, we're supportive of any safety measures. We've had conversations with CPD about a safety office or an office space being included in the development, so we're certainly cognizant of the safety concerns in the community. And in terms of traffic, since the parcel is going to be predominantly a residential use, there will be peak hours from eight to nine and five to six, but other than that, we don't see dramatic change in terms of the traffic flow. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Questions from council members? Councilmember, favor.
Thank you, Mr. McKay, thank you for being here this evening. You said that you worked with the, or met with the Ohio EPA twice, and that there was an improved remediation plan. Can you go into greater detail what that actually means for you all?
I could, I could provide a copy of it, I don't have it with me, but we took them through the building just to show them where all of the asbestos currently was, because as was stated previously, the previous owner, they did not do a good job making clear what was still in the building. And so we, we took them through to make sure that we were cleaning up everything by the book. I'm happy to provide it to council, though, I don't have the remediation plan with me, though, I apologize.
But it's speaking specifically to the asbestos that was in the building?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then you, you mentioned, I'm sorry, Chair, you mentioned that there had been some additional conversations just around safety, and I think the concerns that were mentioned by our, our guests this evening were specifically just to traffic flow, not to other, to criminal activity. And so I, I think I might have missed what your response was there.
So in terms of the traffic, what we did was, for that grant that was secured from the federal government, we provided a support letter to the city of Columbus in favor of that. So in terms of any design elements or things that need to be included in development, we're, we're actually changing the right-of-way and we're going to provide some layout to help shrink that to two lanes, so it's going to come into the parcel. So we're being diligent about understanding that, yes, traffic is a concern, we're providing a portion of the parcel that's going to be dedicated as part of the right-of-way to the city in order to facilitate that down from the number of lanes that are now currently down to two. So we're being diligent about making sure that we address the safety concerns and traffic concerns that people have in the neighborhood.
Chair Dorans, just as a follow-up to that, we could stay here for just a second, council member. And I actually, this isn't for the applicant, but for public service, can you, we've talked a lot about the twenty-four million dollar investment along Livingston Avenue, we did some Livingston Avenue road dieting on the other side of Livingston Avenue that would now come towards Livingston Avenue from Eighteenth to Nelson? No, am I correct, Parsons? Can you take us through what, what that study involves, what we are looking at in terms of some of the strategies? Because, a couple things. First of all, we're not, this is a residential area, period. People live along this corridor, there are already apartments, there are houses, and then aside from the main road, people live on these roads. And so the traffic concerns with Livingston Avenue have long been traffic concerns, which is why we have begun to address them. But I want to just be clear about what some of the strategies are that we have been discussing in public service along with that grant and how we are addressing some of the specific concerns, along with Vision Zero, we have a complete streets plan that is coming that will guide how we are making decisions and when we are making decisions, this all falls in line with part of this grant. Can you just speak a little bit more specifically to that?
Sure. So related to the proposed improvements on East Livingston Avenue, one of the biggest components that are being planned in that is to dramatically change the cross-section of the street. Basically, currently, there's a four-lane section there, it's a long way for folks to cross the street, four lanes of moving traffic. The, the cross-section basically is going to have two lanes in each direction, that, that's the intention of, as the design moves forward in the, the final designs, as well as providing for pedestrian and bicycle facilities. So those will, I, I know the design elements are, they're, they're still, still working through that, the final design process, however, the, the general idea as, that was a result of a fair amount of community engagement and study and, and, and folks, folks talking about this was, you know, looking, the best way to change what the road looks like so it can be safer for, for everyone.
And we've noticed a, a significant decrease in both speeds and accidents along the other side of Livingston Avenue, where we did do road dieting, where we did do the one-lane traveling in either direction that we are discussing on this portion of Livingston Avenue, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And we can get more specific for the residents, we can give what those numbers look like, because I know that we shared those as part of our Vision Zero plan. So I'm happy to ensure that our residents have that so they can understand how these strategies have been put into play and then what the results of those were. I'm sorry, council member, you might have had follow-up questions, I just want to make sure we address those.
I do have a follow-up, but I have a follow-up to your follow-up.
Follow-up.
But simply because there was comparisons that were made to McNaughton and decisions that were, votes that were made as it relates to developments on McNaughton based upon prior traffic incidents. So can you clarify whether or not there is the same type of study that's being currently done on McNaughton and the significant amount of investment that is being made on Livingston, is that being also made on McNaughton? And I don't think that they, I think the answers to both of those questions are no.
And I will, I will, I'm going to say this and then public service should check me. The answer is no. Right now, there are not currently the plans for McNaughton that we have for Livingston Avenue. And second of all, from my understanding, there are also constraints on, on McNaughton that do not allow us to make the changes that we would make on Livingston Avenue because of the construction of the roads. We just don't have the space that we would have, is that correct?
I mean, I think it's partly a factor of, of the location. I mean, McNaughton is maybe more of a suburban area and Livingston is more of an urban. So I think the, whatever that final product is, it's going to be different. And Livingston's is more of a urban project, but McNaughton, I know there is plans to install shared-use path facilities along that corridor, that is, that's anticipated in the future, so, but it's not a more substantial, you know, roadway project.
I, I think, I want to give you an opportunity to maybe clarify what you're saying there. You're not saying that the, the type of work that's being done here is only because it's in an urban setting versus a suburban setting, right? It's just the way that.
Yes, perhaps I could clarify what, the, just the, the nature that it's, that it's currently already a walkable area. And, and I guess that's what I'm speaking to, that, that they're already, you know, contrasting Livingston with McNaughton, for, for example, Livingston has sidewalks where most, a lot of sections of McNaughton do not have sidewalks. So there, it's, it's making the, the, you know, improving that, that existing corridor and making it serviceable for everyone and safe for everyone.
If, if I may, the infrastructure is a bit different, council member, from my understanding in the conversations with public service. So we just don't, we, we quite literally do not have the real estate on McNaughton that we might have on Livingston Avenue to address some of the concerns, some of the traffic concerns, you know, shared-use path, changing the directions of the street, improved crosswalks, lead pedestrian cross-intersection, crosswalks. We would not be able to do some of those things on McNaughton in its current state.
Thank you for that. And then my, my follow-up question to you is that there was a statement that had been made, that there was the attempt by some of the members of the community to reach a good neighbor agreement. You said that you all, that you have reached a good neighbor agreement, they are saying that there, that is not the case, can you, can you clarify, please?
Yeah, I have a copy of it with me today. It was signed on March fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, so I can, I can provide it to council.
That would be helpful.
Thank you. And yeah, that good neighbor agreement was provided to all the offices from the applicant prior to tonight's meeting as well. Want to do other council members have a question, I believe, Councilmember Bankston?
Just one more question. With your conversations with the EPA, they came out and did testing on-site. With that, was there anything else they found outside of asbestos? I know that's pretty routine to do, soil samples, that kind of a thing. Because I think that the term brown field is a very broad term. There are things that can be found in a brown field that, if not disturbed, are fine. There are things that absolutely, as this was a toxic waste dump at one point and you can't build anything here ever again. So there's varying levels to brown field, so I just want to know if there's anything else that was found on the actual site other than the asbestos that is typical with a building this age?
Yes, the big thing was the soil, there was contaminated soil at a couple of different spots on the site, so that's going to have to be hauled away and replaced with fresh fill. So I can provide you the specific spots and aerial of where that's going to be on the site, but that was the main item, is that we did find some contaminated samples that were on the property. We used, GCI was our environmental consultant on this, and they went out and did the testing in terms of that. So that'll all be remediated as well, and additional to the abatement of the asbestos.
Right, and then one, and then with that, once it is remediated, I'm pretty sure the EPA comes back out and tests again to make sure.
Correct.
And there are certain types of soils that I know that you can cap with concrete or cap, period, that help to contain anything that may be under there before, so it doesn't leak into the atmosphere. Is that what we're dealing with here on that, on this particular site?
We'll be, we'll be taking, we won't be capping, but we'll be taking the soil actually off-site and cleaning it essentially and replacing it with fresh fill. And in addition to that, I should add that the financing that we're utilizing through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency requires that we go through this process additionally. So in order to make sure that the site is appropriate for residential use, the financing itself requires that we remediate it appropriately and test after the fact to make sure it meets those requirements. So that will all be done by the book with best practices and standards.
Got you, thank you. And you did secure a grant from the state, not from necessarily the city, but from the state to be able to cover the soil costs.
Yes, it was the brown field remediation program.
Got you, thank you.
And Councilmember Bankston, Councilmember, favor.
Thank you. Just as we're, as Councilmember Bankston started speaking about hauling away what gets remediated, I, I do want to, once again, amplify a concern that has been, that was brought up this evening, but I know that has been an ongoing issue with residents in Driving Park as it relates to construction debris and things that have been, being removed from that neighborhood for quite some time, so much so that that is an active case in environmental court right now. And so I do take those concerns very seriously because I know that it has impacted the residents negatively for at least two to three years now. And so I'm not sure if you can speak to at this moment what your practices would be as it relates to hauling that material away so as to protect the health of the residents.
I can't speak to the specifics because I'm not an expert in that field, but I'm happy to provide a report from our environmental site assessment group, it's a third-party group called GCI, and so I can provide that to you with, in regards to the remediation plan as well, so that you have all that information.
That will be helpful for me, because once again, this is an active case for this neighborhood that is, that it is in environmental court. And obviously, as we're, we're talking about the removal of such things like asbestos, we want to make sure that we're taking good care of, of the residents' health and well-being in the, in the neighborhood.
Certainly.
And Councilmember, any other, Councilmember Whitech?
Yeah, just one follow-up question related to that. When you met with the EPA and they came out, did they give any sort of recommendation around timing related to the project? Like, did they say, once it's remediated, give it five years before you actually develop? Was that mentioned at all?
I was, I was on the first site visit with the EPA, that, I don't remember them saying anything specific in regards to that. I was not on the second, a member of our construction team led that charge, but I can double-check with them and I'll get back with you on that.
Thank you, council member. Other questions or comments from council members at this time? Councilmember Broso, deputy.
Can you also, to the, to the point of the brown field, if we're still here, have, has your company remediated other brown fields? And if so, can you talk about that process and where that might be?
I've been with WODA seven years now, nothing else sticks out in terms of other brown field sites that were on the federal database, though there may have been ones that were not listed because they were not surveyed, but I can't speak specifically to others. I can touch base with the team, though, and see what other different properties we had that were classified as brown fields and provide that, though, to you. And then speak to the specific measures that it took to remediate those and make them appropriate for residential use.
And, and I would say, not just for us, but also for the community. So I think, you know, good for us vested interest in the community and the folks who live, you know, just across the street, what does this look like and what does that process look like? And I think, again, for the communication and the transparency of understanding what the, the process has been, what the process looks like, and then getting those updates along the way, I think would be highly recommended, should this pass, to just ensure that people feel better about the project and they understand what is happening.
Other questions or comments from council members at this time? Thank you, Mr. McKay. So to summarize, this legislation is coming back before the body for the second time, and I know a number of individuals in the neighborhood have engaged with individual council members and I think the body generally. You know, there is no perfect site in Columbus across the city that addresses, I think, everything that we've talked about here today, particularly as we've talked about traffic investments, those are planned, those have been planned based upon that federal grant. Again, we're talking about a very different situation compared to other issues that have come before this body before, we're actually talking about shrinking the road. Again, people respond to the built environment around them, and that is something literally on Livingston Avenue has changed after road dieting measures have been employed within that area. The Ohio EPA is the governing agency and regulatory body for any type of brown field remediation. The applicant has engaged with the state and continues to engage with the state. That is not necessarily an issue that is before this body as it relates to a zoning. Certainly, the questions and concerns from, from folks in our community on that topic, I think, are valid and certainly something that we expect the applicant to continue to work through. Absent redevelopment of the site, it will remain a brown field with exposed asbestos within that building and has been vacant for decades. So we have heard a number of questions and concerns from folks over the last two years regarding this project. Again, they have varied from, I think, some of the traffic concerns we've heard here tonight, economic development concerns we've heard here tonight. But bottom line, what we have before us is a moderately-sized affordable housing project that will provide permanent affordability within an area of Columbus that is rapidly changing, that is rapidly becoming more expensive for folks to continue to call that neighborhood home. The applicant, over the last two years, has, again, responded to a number of community requests during that time, including providing commercial space, including providing market rate units within this development in addition to the income restricted units. And keep in mind, this project has been approved by both city staff, the Development Commission, and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission. So all the official recommending bodies before that come before council have, in fact, approved this body or this project. Again, bottom line, what we're talking about here is a modest development that's going to increase affordable housing within an area that is connected transit, that, again, absent this type of investment, we would not see that building redeveloped, certainly in a way that would provide any productivity to that area of the city. So based upon what based upon what has come before this body, I feel comfortable with this project moving forward at this time. With that, I'd like to call for a vote by voice.
Let me just say something. I wasn't going to say something, but this project has been has gotten to me for a long time because I grew up in this neighborhood. I went to Fairwood Elementary School. I lived on Fairwood and Gaunt Street. So I come from this neighborhood. And when this project was brought before us a year ago, we did the first vote. Since then, I helped me with a with a recognition of where we are now in our community when it comes to housing and what people think of housing and people who what people think of those who live in those houses or those types of units. I said after this process with Driving Park that I've learned that good people can be dead wrong on housing. And I said that because at the time, and this gets to Councilmember Bankston's point, and I rarely get upset from this dais because in a city of a million people, we can disagree all day, and I and it should not interfere with how I think about folks and what they say in front of me at the dais. But the original arguments that were before us a year ago with this project was about sending more poor kids to Fairwood Elementary School and adding to the problems of the neighborhood. It was about safety, and it wasn't traffic safety. Traffic safety was brought up, but it was folks breaking into our homes. It was about putting in our neighborhood, putting people in our neighborhood just as it was starting to turn around. Those were the original arguments that came before council. And now we speak, we are here today, and folks are throwing around terms and mumps and measles and the Tuskegee experiment that that folks might kids were going to die and they're going to be on our hands. If I thought that you believed that, I would not be this upset because I do know how good of a people they are because I grew I come from this community. We in this community, in this city, have to get comfortable that we're going to have to build housing and build it everywhere in every every area of our community. Using using an asbestos argument around a brownfield site and and making that analogy, making it connected to to a Tuskegee experiment is so many steps too far, so many steps too far. We have we and this council has voted down a brownfield site when a development came on 11th Avenue and Cleveland Avenue. We voted that down. It was a dump. It was and then it was next to a a facility, a trucking facility that that tore things apart. And folks came to us and said that, yeah, you could you can remediate that and you can put put folks there. And we said that we would not put folks there. And so I didn't want anybody watching this meeting tonight that just watched the first 15 minutes of this conversation to think that this council would be okay with those things. Because I have to think about the folks who, on Martin Luther King Day, were sitting outside homeless with a six year old because they can't afford to have housing in this community. And I think about their safety because if we remember back to that day, MLK Day of this year, it was six degrees outside. And a mother with her seven year old daughter was sitting outside of one of our rec centers, not Driving Park, not our nice, nice Driving Park rec center, one of the most expensive investments that we made in recreation centers in our in our city, but was sitting on a recreation center for three hours with a seven year old. I have to think about that when I take this vote. That's what makes me want to vote yes, and that's what makes me call this vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bankston? Ms. Barosa De Padilla? Ms. De Ockhauer? Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faver? Ms. Green? I'm sorry. Mr. Rimi? Mr. White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, pass.
Thank you, Council President. Now we move on to the council variances portion of our agenda. First, we have ordinance 0773-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3332.037 R2F residential district 3312.49c required parking 3332.05A for area district lot width requirements 3332.14R2F area district lot width requirements 3332.19 fronting 3332.25 maximum side yard required 3332.26C1 minimum side yard and 3332.27 rear yard of Columbus City Code to the property located at 228 Reinhardt Avenue to allow a two unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. The site consists of a single unit dwelling and a council variance is required because the current district does not allow two single unit dwellings on one lot, while the applicant proposes to build a single unit dwelling above a detached garage, often known as a carriage house. The proposal has approvals from city staff, but a disapproval from the German Village Commission. Due to that disapproval, we will now hear a staff presentation. Ms. Rose, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. The site consists of a single unit dwelling in the R2F residential district. The variance is required because the R2F district does not allow two single unit dwellings on one lot, while the applicant proposes to build a single unit dwelling above a new detached garage. Variances for lot width, lot area, fronting, side yards, rear yard, and a parking reduction from four required parking spaces to two provided spaces are also included in this request. The site is located within the boundaries of the German Village Historic District, which does not contain a council adopted land use plan. Staff supports the variances as the request is consistent with similar proposals in the neighborhood and notes that the existing R2F district permits two unit dwellings. Additionally, staff note that a certificate of appropriateness for final building design is required from the German Village Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Any questions for the department at this time from council members? CNN, I do believe we have the chair of the German Village Commission with us, Mr. Eric Martino?
I'm the advocate, not the chair of the commission.
Okay, is the chair of the commission here? I don't believe I thought he was here, but apparently he's not. So at this point, I will ask the the applicant to come forward to speak to the project.
Thank you, Chairman Dorans, President Harden, and council members. My clients have applied for variances to construct a small carriage house and garage. There's no structure there being demolished. German Village actually was presented with this plan as a conceptual before they took the step of hiring me and getting final construction drawings. And German Village liked the plan. They approved the concept when we appeared before them with the list of variances. As has happened occasionally before, German Village is very afraid of rental properties. They're afraid this property might, at some point, though my clients have no intention of doing that at this point, this is just a studio space with a bathroom and a kitchenette for their use, at some point, it might be that way. That said, this zone, this property is zoned R2F. It has a single family on it now. If my clients were to have approached this differently, say, I just want to convert the second story to a separate unit and make this a duplex, that would be completely consistent with the zoning. It would also have the exact issues that German Village would need. Would we need a parking variance to do that? Yes, or they would have to pave most of the backyard. Interestingly, the design and the way the zoning code even approaches properties like this, once it is proposed to be used as an ADU or a carriage house, then it is no longer considered just a garage. If that space was simply storage space, this property could be built with the only only difference of having to narrow it by 0.4 feet in width because there's no height restriction. This would be they'd still have to get approval from German Village for all architectural components, and they already have that. They've gone through that portion. And at the same meeting where they did not approve the variances, they did approve the appearance and construction materials. So despite the fact that could be a duplex under existing zoning, and this is going to be a less impactful use than a full duplex property, even multi bedroom, German Village was clear they're afraid of setting a precedent that anyone who wants one can build one. And that was what they explained. And kindly, they said they've had this before on South Fifth Street. They've recommended against approval. They said the council still approved it. So they told me, we expect you to get council approval. We just don't want to set the precedent here. Thank you. Any questions?
Yep, thank you. Any questions for the applicants representative this time? So, sir, I apologize, I forgot to swear you in before you provided testimony. So do you swear from the testimony you just provided? Is the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer pains and penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? CNN, thank you, sir. As I've mentioned, while this project does have disapproval from the German Village Commission, I've been in contact with that commission. Again, as the applicant representative mentioned, there's, I think, some concerns holistically around how carriage houses or EDUs may or may not be able to be utilized in the future. This is certainly one of those situations where sort of reasonable minds can disagree about whether or not this type of increased light density to a neighborhood would have substantial impact, whether or not there'd be parking or otherwise. Again, as we've talked a lot about with with council generally around efforts to increase density within the city, the variances here, based on the staff report, I believe, have been met from a hardship standpoint. And this is certainly the type of light density that we're expected to see within neighborhoods that, again, have that are very mature, and this is a ability to add additional types of buildings within some of our older areas of the city. So with that, I also did commit to the commission that we would engage with them this summer on some of these issues that are more outstanding as it relates to some of the city's processes regarding potential lots put on the line and how parking may be impacted by those kinds of things. So certainly, I think, additional discussions on this, but I believe that this project before council tonight is ready to move forward. And with that, a move to accept the entire staff report and new evidence as an exhibit?
Bankston, Barosa De Padilla, De Ockhauer, Dorans, Faver, Green, Rimi, White, President Harden.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the fines of staff is the fines of council.
Bankston, Barosa De Padilla, De Ockhauer, Dorans, Faver, Green, Rimi, White, President Harden.
Thank you. Finally, move for passage.
Bankston, Barosa De Padilla, De Ockhauer, Dorans, Faver, Green, Rimi, White, President Harden.
Thank you. And now we will move the council variance companion from the previous rezoning we had earlier in our agenda, which is ordinance 0972-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 3333.025 AR2 apartment residential district use 3309.14A height districts 3312.49c reduced parking 3333.18 building lines and 3333.255 perimeter yard Columbus City Code for property located at 1826 Livingston East Livingston Avenue to allow a mixed use development with reduced development standards in the AR2 apartment residential district. The applicant has received, as I mentioned earlier, recommendations from the staff, city staff, Development Commission, and the Livingston Area Area Commission. The requested council variance will allow a mixed use development with with up to 118 dwelling units, 2,000 square feet of eating and drinking space, and 3,500 feet of overall office or retail space. The proposal, again, has approval from city staff and the Livingston Avenue Area Commission. We do have two speakers signed to speak against this ordinance who qualify as impacted parties. As I mentioned when we began tonight's agenda, only those that legally qualify as impacted parties are permitted to testify on council variances pursuant to the city attorney's advice to council based on what record this this council considers when it approves a council variance. So with that, I would like to turn the floor back over to Mr. Joe Rose from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, specifically to detail on these variances. So again, we passed the rezoning earlier in the agenda. This piece of legislation is specifically regarding the council variances as it applies to that project. Mr. Rose?
Thank you. As stated, the applicant has received a recommendation of approval from staff and the Development Commission, which occurred on January 11, 2024, for concurrent rezoning requests Z22-042 for an AR2 apartment residential district. The requested variance will allow the mixed use development with a site plan demonstrating up to 118 dwelling units, 2,000 square feet of eating and drinking establishment space, and 3,500 square feet of office or retail space. Variances to building height, building setback, perimeter yard, and a reduction in parking from 218 to 162 spaces provided are included in this request. Staff supports the requested variances, which are similar to those approved with ordinance number 1734-2022, as they will allow a mixed use development that is consistent with the existing mix of uses along this portion of East Livingston Avenue. Additionally, staff notes that this site is is within the initial focus area of the zoning initiative and the mixed use zoning designations that are consistent with this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any questions from council members for the department at this time? So as I mentioned, we have two speakers against this ordinance that, again, qualifies as impacted parties. The first is John Coats, who I'll invite back to council, and I will swear in when you get to the podium. Mr. Coats, would you like to testify? We also have Booker Coats as well. So we'll have you both. So I need to swear in before you give testimony. If you would mind, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Shall be the truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer under pains or penalty of perjury? So please say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
In light of what has transpired, in light of what has transpired here this afternoon, there's no sense in wasting my time. Because obviously, my safety, my welfare, environmental court, all it doesn't mean anything. I want it on the record. Okay.
I'll go all the way back to Sullivan Garden, Bolivar Arms, Windsor Terrace, Uzi Alley. And that's a lot of problems that has been created in Columbus. First of all, if we don't go with the brownfield where they check chemicals that was on the site, they had drums on the site. And the drums with their summertime and the heat would bust like bombs and spread whatever chemicals was in the drums on the ground. And I look at if you build an apartment there without checking for the chemicals, the little kids be playing in the grass outside, the chemicals will be coming up through the building and people will be getting sick and things other than that that nature. So we have Bowen Brothers, which is a garbage company within 50 feet of my house. And and you going to put a apartment complex next to the garbage company that hauls trash and garbage and create flies and and smell in the area. So I would say it's the rich feeding the rich. They don't care who suffer as long as they get what they are looking for. And I've been out in my area for 64 years. When I got out there, I bought out there. And we are buying abandoned houses, the wife and I fixing them up. I didn't tuck my tail and run. I stayed there to try to clean up the neighborhood. So we are asking you to do the right thing. That's all we are doing, asking you to do the right thing. We elect you to represent us and protect us from harm and danger, and this is dangerous. You got Bowen Brothers spreading garbage. We've been suffering with them for over three years, and it seems to be nothing done. They just delay, delay, they play the trump game, delay, delay, delay. And we are tired of suffering. All the dust, the mud, the noise at midnight, noise start with the trucks in and out and it up until four o'clock in the evening. The streets move air, tore up the streets. It's like It's like you running down a gravel road with them big trucks there. Now the trucks are on Rose Avenue going to Livingston. There's no light there, but with them leaving the yard at midnight, they don't have to worry about the traffic. But come out there and look. See what we are going through out there. And if you don't complain, you're not going to get anything, and I'm complaining.
Oh, another thing, I said I wasn't wasting my time. I would invite you because Bowen Brothers came and set up in mid-2021. Now, I don't know who gave them permission, but that trash, Bowen Brothers Waste Management taking out the trash right there beside our home. And we're environmental court now, but it took years to even get there. Things are moving very, very slowly. Dust in my lungs, in our lungs, in our homes, in our vehicles, whether they are parked on the street or in the garage, on the floor in our home and stuff. Dust, noise. And I want you to know that the health department, because I kept calling and calling, December of 2022, they assigned me to someone from the health department, all that noise. Now, I grew up on, in the country, on the farm, and it's interview, did you know how loud cotton gin motor runs? You go to Mugu guy, you get your car washed, you know how loud that is? Waking me up. So they assigned a lady, but it took her from December to August to get out there. Each time I caught raining, we can't test. By the time she get to the office and get her equipment to come out there and measure the sound that's driving me crazy, that wake me up 7:30 in the morning, finally in August, she did. It registered at 66 decibels, and that's much too loud. It's right there. Now, she did work with us, and she went, and she talked with management there, and they promised her that they wouldn't run those fan right there beside your bedroom, waking you up. From, oh, wait, wait, August until, however, Thursday, April 11 of 2024, at 9:30 a.m., I was on the west side of our house, and I heard this noise. I said, oh, I went and looked. Okay, went next door, we working on our property, but they had promised her, and the fan had not been on. But it drives you crazy. I invite you, you come out there, if I'm not home, you come up on my porch, and you look at the gliders, you look at the doors, you look at the home. We have to power wash our home. We haven't power washed them recently, last summer, you on power washing when it's cold. But you just come and you look at our home. We have to contend with this. And I have medical issues, and I'm not the only one. Fortunately, we're still alive. Three from that immediate area have transitioned, and the situation there didn't help us at all. Come out, I'm not there, you just come out. You don't believe me, you come out for yourselves.
And, and those large containers that they pull up on the large trucks to get the debris when they renovate a place, they have a hole that they have eroded into Columbus streets. And when they, it looked like they, they tried to play a game, that who can make the container the loudest when it hit the hole? And it sounds just like a bomb going off.
Baluma, luma, 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 luma.
That's right. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. And we, we've been fooling with that and dealing with that for three years. I mean, absolutely three years. It's, it's impossible to, to cut your grass. I cut the grass today. I had to put on a mask, there's so much dust. We had to buy boulders and put on the corner to keep them from eroding the yard away.
Like they did the neighbors' yard.
That's right. And, and now they are, see who can keep up the most dust when it's dry. And they bring mud up on the streets. You, you should look and see where they parked the trucks. It, it's just a muddy hole, and they bring all the mud and dust and rocks up on the streets. I drove to Mississippi to my sister's funeral and came back, rocks were still stuck in the tires. It's little pea gravel, stuff like that.
Anyway, we just continue to suffer, Ms. Favor. It's been nearly three years. Mr. Harden, in three years.
Come out here, come out, come out and look. Just look. It's impossible.
Mr. Harden, you know, I invited you over here, as I told you, I said, come in the daytime. And if you come out there, you're driving north on roads, when you get to Kent, get in the middle of the street. Because if you don't, if you drop in that ass hole that's nearly 12 to whichever, you're gonna destroy your vehicle.
And I, I asked the city to fill the hole, and the city said they're not going to fill it. It's, it's Bowen Brothers responsibility to fill the hole. And one day, I was cutting the grass, a guy on a motorbike ran in the hole, threw him up against the wall, knocked him out, and I went over to help him. I said, do you want me to call the emergency squad? He said, no, they might carry me to jail. And the bike, he rolled it away. I thank you for letting me tell you the condition that we are living in and can't do nothing about it but just wait.
And one last thing, and after this, I'm going to go. If the sun shines today, there was plenty dust, the faster you dry, the more dust is generated. And today was one of those days. Now, somebody has been dragging the street, they say sweeping it, can't sweep because it doesn't have curb, so they drag that mud down the street, and it dries, it turns into dust. And the faster you dry, the more dust. And people drive through that strip like bats escaping from hell. So come out.
And thank God the wind is most times in the east. That gives us a little bit of breathing space.
Let's go, we're in this fight.
Well, thank you both for being here tonight. I know we just had a little bit of a discussion with the city attorney about making sure that we're connecting both of you with the specific attorney within the city attorney's office that is representing the city in that environmental court app action right now. We think it's probably a gentleman named Steve Dunbar, but we'll confirm that and make sure that we're connecting you with them. Those cases do move slow. That's something that I wish that we could, from a council standpoint, move those things forward because, again, you know, that, there's a lot going on there that sounds like needs to be addressed in that court process is in fact the one specifically with that, that business that would address that. Again, unfortunately, many of those concerns are not necessarily applicable for like the request for the council variances that are before us right now. So with that, I would first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next move to adopt defiance of staff is defiance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all we have in tonight's zoning agenda.
Seeing no further business coming from council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
We have several non-agenda speakers.